Regular meeting with our new superintendent, Andrew Bats, so welcome.
Thank you.
We were just gonna turn this whole evening into a roast of our new superintendent, but we actually have a lot to do, so we are delighted that you're all here. We have a couple of quick things to do before introduction of new staff. The calendar is up on the overhead and there are many things that aren't on there specifically related to the ninth school, which we'll talk about later tonight, but at least those are the important public meetings. Are there additions to the calendar?
No, the other one.
Okay. All right. Great, thank you. Any other additions to the calendar? We have a consent agenda with former meeting minutes and notes and an out-of-school, out-of-country student trip. Do we have a motion for the consent agenda?
No.
Okay, do I have a second? Okay, all those in favor? All right, or because you weren't here. Okay. Hold on, so all those in favor, hands up. Okay. All those opposed? Okay, abstentions? Two abstentions. All right, great, thank you. Mr. Bats?
Welcome, everyone. I want to start with introductions and we'll go through some folks who were introduced at the very end of last year, but I want to go through and introduce them again, as well as people in new positions in our school system, as well as people who have changed positions. So I'm gonna start with Sam Zimmerman, our Deputy Superintendent for Student Services. Sam comes to Brookline after serving, most recently as Deputy Director of Specialized Instruction for New York City's Department of Education, where he led a team responsible for 251 schools with a total enrollment of 126,000 students in Brooklyn. He worked in New York City for 15 years as a special education teacher, administrator, and deputy network leader. So, welcome to Sam. Also want to introduce Wendy Ryder, who you know. Wendy has changed positions and is now our Director of Special Education at Brookline High School. Wendy is in the back, behind Brian. Brief introduction of Wendy, after serving in the Public Schools of Brookline, Special Education Administrator for Specialized Programming. Ms. Ryder is now the Director of Special Education for Brookline High School. And prior to coming to Brookline, Ms. Ryder worked as a Special Education Student Services Administrator for City on a Hill Charter Public Schools Network, where she established Special Education Student Services Departments for the opening of two new high schools within two years. She also served as a Special Education Administrator for Howe Manning Elementary School in Middleton, Mass. For nine years in the Beverly Public Schools as their early childhood coordinator and team chairperson. And she started her career in healthcare, working as Director of Rehabilitation Services at Union Hospital in Lynn. So I know the high school is thrilled to have Wendy as a part of the team. Lisa Redding, who I want to be sure we introduced early, because she has an event in 20 minutes at the high school. Lisa is our Interim Dean of Students at Brookline High School. Ms. Redding's been an Associate Dean of Students at BHS since 2013. Prior to becoming Associate Dean of Students, she was a math teacher at BHS since 2001, teaching pre-calculus, algebra, geometry, and trigonometry, and working with the calculus project. And she was also a member of the Faculty Council and the BHS Legislature and received the Cavali Award in 2011. Prior to working in Brookline, she taught math at Chelsea High School, and we welcome her into her new role this year at Brookline High School. Want to introduce Kathleen Hubbard, who is our Interim Curriculum Coordinator for Math, K-8. Kathleen has, Ms. Hubbard has been a math specialist at Baker School since 2011 and has been a public school educator since 2000. Prior to joining Brookline in 2011, Ms. Hubbard was a math specialist in the Boston Public Schools. She's also been a kindergarten, second grade, and third grade teacher in Franklin, Waltham, and a math enhancement teacher in Franklin as well. Ms. Hubbard began her career in education as a teaching intern at Lawrence School in Brookline. I've said often in my introductions these past five days at schools that all roads lead to and from Brookline. There is yet another example. I'd like to reintroduce Janay Ramos as the Dean of Faculty at Brookline High School. Janay has worked for many years as an English teacher, starting her career at Boston Latin School before coming to Brookline to teach at Lincoln School and then at BHS. In her nine years in Brookline, Ms. Ramos has led various learning and teaching initiatives, including the Literacy Project, Content Area Reading Initiative, and Identity Curriculum Development for Grades 9 through 12. As Dean of Faculty, Ms. Ramos will serve as the point of alignment for professional development activities, including those associated with race, equity, diversity, hiring, building, and all of this building-wide. In consultation with the Headmaster, Central Office Staff, Department Chairs, and Teachers, she will support building-based professional learning, including the development and support of collaborative learning teams to address top priorities such as cultural proficiency, literacy across disciplines, and instructional best practices to support all students. So, welcome to the new role. Later on in the Superintendent Report, I have a second introduction of the work that Janay and Brian Poon have launched at the high school in a little more detail. Want to introduce everyone Isabel Gunther, our Vice Principal at Lincoln Elementary School. Ms. Gunther joins the Public Schools of Brookline after serving 10 years as an elementary teacher and an Assistant Principal in New Hampshire. Most recently, she was the Assistant Principal and Co-Principal at the Hillsborough Deering Elementary School in Nashua, New Hampshire. Prior to becoming an administrator, Ms. Gunther was a third-grade teacher at Crisp Elementary School, also in Nashua, and the Beach Street School in Manchester, New Hampshire. She began her career as a Title I teacher, teaching small groups of students in need of additional support. Ms. Gunther grew up in Lawrence, Mass., and I would add, has a depth of experience working with second-language learners. At one point, becoming the point person for her entire school in professional development, consult, RTI support. And so, I want to include that experience as well, as I welcome Ms. Gunther to Brookline. Brendan Kovas is our Interim Associate Dean at Brookline High School. Brendan takes the role of Interim Associate Dean after successfully filling a variety of roles at Brookline High. Most recently, Mr. Kovas was a special education teacher from 2010 until 2016. Mr. Kovas is also Director of Summer School for BHS. He's served as the Chair of the BHS After-School Supports Group, the Co-Chair of the National Honor Society, and the Leader of the Special Education Department Advisory Council. He'll serve as the Interim Associate Dean while Ms. Redding serves as the Interim Dean at Brookline High School. I'd also like to introduce to the committee Dr. David Lemel, who's our Lead Teacher in the African-American-Latino Scholars Program. Dr. Lemel joins the Public Schools of Brookline after five years as the Director of University of Massachusetts-Boston's Urban Scholars Program. As the Director, Dr. Lemel supervised the year-round Gifted and Talented Pre-Collegiate Program that serves 120 urban and first-generation students from the Boston Public Schools in their intensive seven-week summer institute on the UMass Boston campus. He was also responsible for developing partnerships with agencies, universities, corporations, and foundations to strengthen the wraparound services for the program's students. Prior to working for Urban Scholars, Dr. Lemel was the National Director for the Big Picture Company in Providence, Rhode Island, and served on the Educational Diversity and Inclusion Team with Jones &amp; Associates in San Diego. Dr. Lemel is also the father of eighth-grade twins who attend the Brookline Public Schools. And in absence, I'd like to introduce Seth Bartholomew, who is our Special Education Director for Specialized Programs. Mr. Bartholomew comes to the Public Schools of Brookline from the Boston Public Schools, where he was an Assistant Director of Special Education and Student Services. As Assistant Director, Mr. Bartholomew developed and led system-wide improvements for programming and supports for students with disabilities. Prior to working in Boston, Mr. Bartholomew worked as Regional Coordinator for the May Institute and an Educational Team Supervisor of the Evergreen Center in Milford, Mass. He's also an Adjunct Instructure at UMass Boston. Mr. Bartholomew grew up in North Carolina and began his career there as a life skills teacher, and will be joining the Public Schools of Brookline officially on September 19th. So, I want to welcome everyone to Brookline Public Schools. One last introduction that I did in June when I stepped in for Dr. Conley. Dr. Tina Bozeman, our K-12 Curriculum Coordinator for Physical Education and Health. I have spoken with Dr. Bozeman several times, and she is a rock star, a great addition to our school system, and a real advocate, a deep passion for physical education and health education. Dr. Bozeman has worked as a teacher and administrator for more than 20 years. In 2005, she became the first high school lifetime wellness and physical education teacher to earn National Board Certification. Dr. Bozeman served as the Coordinator for Health, Wellness, Physical Education, and JROTC for the Metropolitan Nashville Public Schools. Prior to moving into administration, Dr. Bozeman taught 10 years at the Martin Luther King Magnet School in Nashville. She returned there in 2011 to once again serve as a lifetime wellness teacher, and she is thrilled to be in Massachusetts and a part of the Public Schools of Brookline.
How exciting. Well, normally what we do, and we don't have quite so many, is each person comes up and they usually face a question from Ms. Charlefsky. Sometimes it's a softball, it's often a softball. But I guess I'm curious, if anybody would like to say anything, you're welcome to, although the bar is sort of high at this point, to stand up and come to the microphone. But I will say just how excited we are, there might be other people who do want to say some things, but how excited we are not only to have such an amazing group of people that already worked in Brookline, that we can promote into their roles. It's just incredibly exciting as we grow our own, and also to have attracted such outstanding people from elsewhere and are excited to be here, because we're excited to have you. So, thank you. There's a lot about Brookline that is its way on purpose, and there are a lot of things in Brookline that are the way they are because that's the way they've been done. And so, I would just invite all of you to ask questions and say, why do we do it that way again? And challenge us and bring your experiences, so that we all benefit. So, thank you. I'm not sure if anybody else wants to say anything. Oh, Ms. Charlefsky, there we go.
I'll just add one thing, because I had the opportunity to meet Dr. Lemel, and one thing you forgot was that he's a BHS graduate.
My apologies.
Which I think, not just a father to BHS children, but also a graduate.
Perfect. Well, thank you. You're more than welcome to stay for the rest of our three-and-a-half-hour meeting. If you don't wish to do that, that is okay. Also, you can watch it online later. But thank you all for coming.
So, I want to update the committee on the opening of school, as well as the work that we have done to build our new administrative team, and share the work that Ms. Ramos and Mr. Poon have led, launched and led at BHS. Very excited to share all of it. I want to start with the opening of school. It's hugely successful, smiling faces all around. As of noon today, I had visited every K-8 for at least an hour, some of them for three or more, and hated to leave all of them, as well as BHS twice. The only places I have not visited yet are early childhood programs, which I will be visiting before the middle of next week. So, very excited to visit there as well. To say that all of our K-8s, pre-K-8 schools, had just incredibly, as I said, incredibly successful openings. I want to highlight in particular and pass along special congratulations to the Devotion School Team, both at Lower Devotion and Upper Devotion. I was able to arrive at Lower Devotion about five minutes, 10 minutes after arrival on the first day of school, and everyone was already in the building. The school was, there was not a delay of getting everyone into the high-rise. A lot of the fears that folks at Devotion in particular had did not come to fruition. There was a coffee, there was a parent coffee behind the school in the play area, and I joined in the coffee informally, and it was really great, incredible amount of excitement for the school year. I then spent about three hours with Ms. Buller and Mr. O'Hara touring the school. And when I say that by the end of the first hour, students were fully immersed in learning, it was deeply happening early on. We walked into music class, and students, third graders, were already playing the recorder. I mean, it was not an introduction to music, the recorder was out. Students were exploring their classroom libraries, students were exploring math centers. There were smiling faces all around, and I think it really, it captures, I mean, it was such a success for the entire community. And I really want to pass along a very special thanks to the teachers, to staff, to the administrators, to the parent community, to the Building Department, in particular Tony and Charlie, to Marielle and Dunn, to Matt Gillis, to Dr. Conley, and all of the Devotion families that made the launch so successful. To me, it really captures the deep level of commitment that the entire staff has to the success of every single student. I actually have some pictures of the classrooms that we can share very quickly. They are without students, which I think is even more impressive, because when you see the rooms, you see that it is a very, it is a school, which is great. Well, that's coming up. Oh, it's behind me, okay. So, a lot of creativity, this is a...
We should have it though up there for the cameras to be able to see.
It's coming.
All right, Ramos. storage cartons with cushions. Go ahead, Ben. Just, you can see the centers, this is a second-grade classroom, I believe, and the workstations that are set up. Again, it's a different view of a classroom with a meeting space, and just, you know, it does not look like the building it was six months ago. Classroom libraries, I wanted to stay in this space. The day I visited, students were exploring books in the library right here, and everyone was, like I said, reading within that first hour of school. Welcome into a class, this is a second-grade classroom. It's different perspectives. This is a learning center space, so really large and very well-designed spaces for learning centers as well.
Beautiful.
And music room. The recorders were here. So, the chairs were all set up, there was an electric guitar at the front, it was the blues, I believe, so it was the recorders playing the blues. So, it was impressive. And a few final spaces, some of the smaller intervention space.
Actually, I have a comment, if you don't mind. I had the fortune of visiting this space when it was raw, basically the nursing home, and then visiting it this summer when parents were invited to come in. The change was absolutely amazing. I mean, what the teachers had done to prepare the space and to make it a good space, those little carts that you saw, they actually went out and bought those, what are they called? Milk crates, and fashioned a way to put a seat on top of it, so that they had a place for, say, I'm sorry, I'm going on and on, but to me, it was truly amazing how you can make lemonade out of lemons. It was, and also kudos to Tony and the whole building staff for making this space work, from getting kids into the school to parents being happy with the space, so that's all I'll say.
Ms. Redding?
One other quick thing to add, so I echo those comments. And also, I just want to say, as far as implementing the first few days of school, as a parent in this building, there has not been a pickup or a drop-off, where I haven't seen either you, Dr. Conley, Jen Buller, or David O'Hara fully present outside the building, greeting parents, and making sure that everybody, everything is going smoothly. So, I just want to echo, I just want to express how much that presence has been felt and appreciated.
I just wondered if you could say something about the introduction of new grades at Upper Devotion as well?
It was next on my list, so thank you. So, as I wrote, is equally impressive and not to be overlooked is the opening of Upper Devotion with 5-8, grades 5-8 at the old Lincoln School. I had the opportunity on Friday, September 2nd, to tour Upper Devotion with Ms. Crowley, and we observed science classes in full swing, fifth-grade students engaged in literacy work, having conversations about their reading, and, you know, full in seventh-grade social studies. We saw inclusion work happening, we saw co-teaching happening throughout the school. And I think, you know, what I want to highlight is that not only did Upper Devotion open incredibly well, grades 5 through 8, but it's the process and really recognize the team for the process of designing a school two years ago, opening it as a 7-8 last year, and expanding this year to 5 through 8. And similar to Lower Devotion, the commitment of teachers, staff, administrators at Upper Devotion is just so clearly evident with the remarkable work being done. And to open a building and maintain the high-quality educational experience that's so important to the entire community, it's really both schools, the teachers, staff, administrators, and families have done a remarkable job all around. I also want to talk about, share the opening of Brookline High School. Had a very successful opening. Ms. Gittens, our Deputy Superintendent for Teaching and Learning, spent much of the day there on the first day with ninth graders, and I joined after leaving Lower Devo, and we both were there on Friday. On Thursday, the ninth-grade students entered the high school from Cypress Field, as you know, with the tradition that I describe in the Superintendent Update, as a welcoming, cheering throng of BHS teachers and staff. The BHS staff described it as a gauntlet. And I want to quote something that Headmaster Meyer noted in a letter he sent out over the weekend to the BHS community, and what he said was, "Our ninth-grade processional was a beautiful sight. It's the best way for us to begin the school year, demonstrating our unity as a faculty, and more importantly, showing our new students how excited we are to work with and support them. A terrific assembly followed with inspirational speeches by the ninth-grade Deans Lisa Redding and Melanie Alexander, as well as some brief words from several junior mentors." I'll add that I had the distinct pleasure, as I pulled in, I was walking along Cypress Field and seeing the junior mentors leading the freshmen on tours of the BHS campus, and was really struck by the pride that the junior mentors were showing in BHS, in the community, and was so impressed by the level of support they gave to freshmen. There were 493 very nervous faces, and I seemed to run into all of the ninth graders I knew, and can really say that they were very nervous. And really, with that support, with the support of the high school team and the junior mentors, when I was back on Friday, I didn't see any nervous faces again. I saw smiles, I saw a group of freshmen that really felt, to me, fully engaged in the high school. It was really exciting to see. I want to thank community partners for the role they play in the opening of BHS. Of note, and a special thank you to the Brookline Rotary and Be Good for sponsoring a welcoming barbecue for all ninth graders, as well as the new 10th, 11th, and 12th grade students. I think it's just such a wonderful example of the strong link between schools and community groups in Brookline in support of all of our schools. And lastly, for the high school, I want to share that on Friday, September 2nd, through really the very generous support of the BHS PTO, ninth, 10th, and 11th grade students experienced Dr. McKee Fallon's performance, which is entitled, "You Don't Know Me Until You Know Me." He is an actor and a psychologist, and Dr. Fallon describes the mission of his work as follows, and I quote, "To create an atmosphere of worldwide inclusion, not just tolerance towards all people." As I mentioned, Ms. Gittens and I were able to attend this incredibly powerful performance along with the BHS 10th and 11th grade students. And I was really, really struck by this, the message of inclusiveness and respect for differences that are at the heart of Dr. Fallon's work, and what I see is these being the key tenants of the work at Brookline High this year, and it's just an incredibly powerful way to launch the year, and it's tied to the faculty launch. You know, you see many aspects of BHS coming together in ways in support of the work, the very important work about inclusiveness, respect for differences, and equity and achievement for everyone, for all.
Things like the ninth-grade processional, was that, has that always been done, or was that new this year? They did it last year. I'm asking because one of the things that strikes me as I listen, and as I have listened to what people have had to say over the past few days that I've run into, is what a good sense people have about the opening of school, and this sort of good feeling that everything, that there's a fresh wind that has blown in. And it, in a way, I've been thinking about why that has been so pervasive everywhere. And it takes me back to a long time ago in Brookline, when some of the teachers, and I happen to be one of them, worked with our Deputy Superintendent Louise Thompson. Now, she has been long gone, most of you probably don't even have a sense of who she was, but she was a woman who was very innovative in her own way. She used to wear roller skates around this floor, because she said she had so much to do. But she talked a lot about building community and building culture, and part of that was things like certain expectations that always happened. When schools opened, there is a processional for ninth grade, there is a way of doing things that everybody recognized, it's kind of branding in a way. And what I feel now, and I have, over the past few years, I have felt like that was lost. Now, it might have been going on, but it was going on in sort of such a low-key, you know, this is what we do, but there's not been any sense of the fact that this is a ritual, and it's an important ritual. And I feel like we're getting that back, and that is really, I think, important, because creating a culture and a community, whether you're talking about the school system, the individual schools, or the classrooms, is exceedingly important in education. And I'm just very happy to see this happening.
So, Benny, you know, I had a, I just entered the high school, and so he absolutely enjoyed himself tremendously, especially Thursday and Friday as well, this week. And for somebody who was fairly quiet and stoic, when he came back, he was very excited and said, "No, I think I don't like this place," which was, wow, that's actually really quite a lot from him. And he also mentioned that the lunch is far better than elementary school.
These are the important things.
So, I want to skip around the order of this a little bit and talk about the Brookline High School Identity Curriculum and the work that Deans Ramos and Poon are leading, so that the committee has a chance to ask any questions. Brookline High School has launched the identity curriculum this summer, and it's already having an impact on faculty and classrooms. The mission of the BHS identity curriculum is to cultivate student and faculty understanding of race, power, and identity as a basis for empathy, scholarship, and action. It will support teachers to tailor lessons and units in their already existing curriculum to support this mission. The identity curriculum will support departments in integrating four themes into their practice through ongoing professional development: identity, identity and community, identity, race and power, and making choices. Deans Janay Ramos and... Deans Janay Ra- Ramos and Brian Poon are leading the development and implementation of the identity curriculum, and have already created learning objectives that support each theme that led professional development related to the identity curriculum. On opening day for faculty and staff, they led a powerful session that put the goals of the identity curriculum within the context of recent race and power-related incidents across the nation and in Brookline, and worked with faculty on developing empathy for others and on how empathy can lead to action. During this two-hour session, staff first shared personal experiences about identity. Teachers then worked on strategies to incorporate discussions of identity into their lessons as they began the school year. Next, they agreed on norms for classroom conversations about race and identity, and then adopted these norms to be universally used for all classroom conversations. Students closed the session by speaking about how powerful it was for them to see the entire staff working on issues of race, power, and identity in order to build empathy with and for students. They also shared how they are beginning to see changes as the conversations are now leading to action. I am very thankful for Janay and Brian's leadership, the support of Headmaster Anthony Meyer, and the faculty's commitment to this essential work. And I would add, um, on both Thursday and Friday, it was, I was stopped by countless, uh, members of the BHS staff, um, where, uh, the, 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 uh, impact of the work that was done earlier in the week in the professional development session was, was highlighted. The thanks for, uh, Deans Ramos and, and Poon in leading this work, uh, was shared with me, and I, I wanted to be sure to share that with them. Very clearly, um, uh, work that is embraced by, um, and, by the entire BHS community, and that the BHS community is very excited about, um, and so, and.
Great. I'll just say, I mean, one thing, which is that we're grateful that work's being done, because it's something that we've been talking about for a while, um, and something that we know there's been appetite for, um, so it's not a hard sell, um, but I think it's great that, I mean, the creation of the Dean of Faculty role and the way that you're approaching it so thoughtfully and method, methodically, um, is, is terrific. Um, and there are lots of ways to do this kind of work badly, and I'm just so glad that, um, it's in really good hands. Um, both of you have such trust in the community and such trust in, in Brookline, um, for your years of leadership here in so many different programs and venues and initiatives and innovations, um, and so just thank you for that. Thank you in particular for taking on the new role, um, and it's just exciting to see that this work is in great hands. And we look forward to hearing sort of how it's, how it's playing out, because some of it's process, um, and it won't always be easy, and there'll be sticking points, and I hope you'll share the pinch points with us also, and if there are things we can do, uh, to be supportive, that would be good to know. But, you know, we don't, we don't only need good news, um, but if there are places where we can be helpful, um, that would be great also. So, I'm not sure if anyone else wants to say anything? Oh. So, if you want to say something, the microphone is, yeah.
I want to just compliment my colleagues, because I was part of the professional development, and it just, the, the, um, embracement of the staff, their energy, um, and I, I just can't explain the culture, that building that has immediately happened for me at the high school being new, and the welcoming of their curriculum was just really astounding, and really just a great place for me to be involved in, so I just want to thank them for that, yeah.
Great. I'm sure if you want to come up to the microphone, the committee would love to hear any thoughts or reflections you guys have, and.
Y'all just want to talk about how more astounding we are?
Or we can just keep complimenting you from here. But you, come on, yeah, please do.
Hey, y'all. Um, I think I wanted to make, um, Andrew, I really appreciate how, um, Mr. Bott, I apologize, how complimentary you are, but I want to correct, um, some of, one of the statements that you made. I think critical to our work is that it, it sounds like Janay and I are these incredible curriculum developers who have done all of this work, but it would be a real misrepresentation of how the work has come about, in that it's been curriculum coordinators, it's been teachers, folk giving of their time, and then I would say, one of the key pivot points for us in how we approach the work is students. We presented to the racial awareness class in the spring of last year. Several kids from that class came to our May and June collaboration time. They came for, uh, three days of summer work, which we were the great beneficiaries of the, the, the money and, and kindness of the BEF. The BEF was essential in terms of saying that our work was important. Um, and so, Janay and I have worked really hard, but it's been such an incredible collaborative effort, um, and so, thank you for your praise, but it's really been very grassroots in terms of how folk give embrace to it.
I just want to add to that again, thank you, and thank you to Nicole and everyone who's listened to us and supported all of this. But for us, the real meaningful part here is, again, the students and the fact that so many events happened last year in terms of the way BHS responded. We thought of different things to do, and students were, and adults were sort of clamoring for, can we have something that's coordinated, something that feels like there's a vision moving forward? And fortunately, kids are really, you know, lo- laps, latching on to this and feeling as if, wow, this is real action, there's conversation, but we're really moving toward real change, and the adults in the building are really responding well to this, and, and thank you, Wendy, we're, we're very excited, so, thank you. Questions, anybody?
I may, I, I might make one more point, and just in terms of, then we'll take, take questions. One of the key things which I think folk appreciate is that so many, um, of us education professionals have taken various professional development things around race and identity. And, and whether that is EMI, or facing history, or we've read, um, Beverly Tatum or Peggy McIntosh, we've got all this scholarship, and, um, and we've learned all these things, and at the core of so much of this work is, well, who am I as a, individually, whatever my positionality, uh, what's my background and who I think I am? And if I can understand that, and the privilege and challenges that go with that, whether I'm, I'm a mixed-race heterosexual man, right? And with that comes Asian American, and with that comes sort of certain privileges and also some challenges. But if I can get a sense of myself, then I have the opportunity to have empathy for folk who are different. And because of that, I think a lot of folk can find themselves, Malcolm Cuthorn talked about how, when, in our earlier meetings, who's a BHS social studies teacher, is that we want to really be broad and say, for folk to be, where am I in this curriculum? Where, who am I? And then I can think about, um, how I am different from folk, and then I can begin to have empathy. And so, uh, there's been a lot of folk who have thought of this, who we have borrowed from, and then tried to pull it together so it's in service to, uh, Brookline staff and students.
Yeah, sure. If it's standing.
Um, I, well, first of all, I, um, if I understand it correctly from my, uh, my skim of the SAG article, uh, Jen Martin, the presentation, and I think, I just want to praise her because , uh, she's also been essential in SWS and, uh, um, community understanding of identity and how we approach it. Uh, she's just been wonderful, and I heard that her thing was incredible as well. And secondly, I don't know if it was, uh, how much this was related, but, uh, as, uh, a previous coordinator of the GTSA, uh, two, like, the year before this, uh, the, we tried really hard to get pronouns in the starting, uh, the, starting of the school, and it didn't really work out. And this year, I'm happy to say that, like, I pretty sure that all of my classes, um, we did introduce those pronouns, and that, um, I know has made a lot of people, including myself, very happy, so, thank you.
Thank you for sharing that.
So Jen Martin, um, who is an SWS social studies teacher, uh, talked, when we were doing our planning meetings, talked about this idea of positionality, in that, uh, who you are, what your position, she describes it as your GPS, where are you located? And then if kids know who, where you're located, then, then it gives them an opportunity to feel more comfortable and trusting in whatever biases you may have in your teaching, but then they can, um, tell you who they are. And so, I think that key idea, theory, has coming into the faculty to say, well, we've got a, it's, it's about relationships. Um, Gary Schiffman also presented about this idea, Dr. Schiffman, also social studies in my department. Uh, that, um, we, this is about our kids know, knowing our kids and our kids knowing us, so that we can move forward, um, in all learning that happens.
If I could just add, and I'm the English department. But to your point that we've been hearing from our Asian American students who are saying for a while, and our Asian American teachers, quite frankly, who are, who are saying before, it seemed like whenever we talked about race and identity, we were looking at black and white, and, and they're feeling more welcome and that, as if there's a space for them within this larger sort of range of identity. And we did begin with art, using our pronouns, and you're so right that last year that really sort of took off, I think, and we're feeling the same way about the norms that we set forward around having these conversations in the same way. Hopefully, these things will become a part of our, our culture. That's good. Thank you. Thank you for coming.
Thank you for your support.
So I will briefly, as I'm aware of time, uh, I want to update the committee on, uh, work to develop, work done over the course of the summer to develop the leadership team.
Let's just pause for one second, because I think people really are going to want to hear this more than an update on a workshop that they all attended. So my guess is that you all want to hear the superintendent talk about this rather than rush through it and review the workshop. Is that right? Yes, okay. So, so don't rush.
So I won't rush.
Oh, yeah. People want to hear from me.
So, um, I may, uh, I, I believe I mentioned, uh, or, or described at the summer workshop, um, that we actually started this work in Jul-, um, June, uh, June twenty-third, I believe, um, with a half-day session with principals, um, and, uh, new senior leadership team members who were available, just, just to start the process of, um, of, of getting to know one another. And we really launched it in earnest, um, on August eighth and ninth. Um, and on August eighth and ninth, principals and senior staff engaged in two days of work, um, around the goal, these following big goals, but, but critical goals, uh, if we're to be successful as a leadership team, uh, in, um, the public schools of Brookline. And those were agreeing on how the leadership team will work together, um, and as, and agreeing to the leadership team focus for the current school year, um, developing a plan to work collaboratively across our schools, um, and, uh, programs to achieve the four goals of the, of the school system. Um, and the, the work included really what is the role of the principal as instructional leader, how do we improve the evaluation process so it better supports educators throughout the system, um, and how will we continue to address educational equity? Um, and then the following week, uh, on August sixteenth, uh, through very generous support from the Brookline Education Foundation, principals, senior staff, uh, high school headmaster, um, a dean of faculty participated in a day of team building on Thompson Island. Um, and it was an incredibly, uh, it was a remarkable, um, deeply powerful day. Uh, the, the, the day included a, a, a real variety of challenges that were presented by the facilitator of Thompson Island, problem-solving challenges, um, where in, sometimes it was in partnership. Uh, Janay, uh, Ramos and I had to try and walk together across a tightrope. Um, and the only way you can do that is if you rely on one another and you trust one another, and you really have to sort of, you have to let go of your fears, and when you do that, you, you are able to be very successful, is one example. Um, there were other examples where you're divided into two teams, and each team is given a challenge, and in the end, what is, what, what you figure out is that if you actually, even though you're two separate teams, if you worked together, it's actually not a challenge, it's a collaborative effort, and you're successful if both teams come together and cooperate. Um, to the end of the day where, uh, we climbed, uh, had the opportunity to climb the, um, ninety-foot Alpine Tower, um, that they have out on Thompson Island, and it's, and it's, it's challenged by choice, and everybody participated in different ways, um, and so some people who necess- weren't necessarily comfortable climbing, directed colleagues who may not be able to see things, so you were the person's eyes on the ground, you were the person's, um, you know, the person, the two people holding safety ropes. Um, our Deputy Superintendent for Administration and Finance held my safety ropes, um, through the whole time, uh, and may have about halfway down from ninety feet, um, asked if anybody needed anything from the superintendent. What was so, really, what was so powerful about the day is it allowed the group to get to know one another as individuals, so that we could understand one another as individuals, and then understand how we all approach problem solving. So with that common understanding, when you get the real challenges that come up, when you get the real situations where we have to work collaboratively, collaboratively, you already understand one another through the, um, through that problem-solving work. So, um, it was, it was an incredibly, um, uh, powerful and impactful day, and, and again, I want to thank the Brookline Education Foundation. On August twenty-third, um, we, uh, hosted a workshop for thirty-five school leaders, so this included vice principals, it included deans and associate deans, uh, so it was an expanded staff. An all-day Title IX training, an investigator training, um, in this part I'm going to read and then I'll, I'll describe. It's designed for public elementary and secondary school administrators to refresh their knowledge about the risk of gender-based harassment in schools, uh, a review of relevant law, guidance, and regulations related to Title IX, uh, and to discuss how to respond to allegations of harassment. The training covered a number of topics, including understanding the differences between discrimination, harassment, and bullying, undertaking investigations, interviewing techniques, how to, uh, um, how to draft an investigatory report. Um, and principals and vice principals from all of our K-8 schools, as well as, as I mentioned, a substantial team from the high school, as well as system-wide leaders participated in the training. Um, and the training was led by two civil rights attorneys, Trina Engelfinger and Kate Upatham of the Law Offices of Elizabeth Shangavi LLC here in Brookline. Um, and I would add that, that attendees reviewed, uh, case law related to Title IX, uh, relevant OCR documents, the two thousand and ten Office of Civil Rights of the Department of Education letter addressing the similarities and differences between bullying and harassment, Dear Colleague letter that was released by OCR in two thousand and eleven, and the OCR's two thousand and fourteen questions and answers on Title IX. Uh, the group discussed key resolutions from the Office of Civil Rights and other, um, recent cases. And the day concluded with everybody, uh, in, in groups going through a hypothetical investigation and receiving feedback in the investigation from the attorneys that were leading the workshop, um, and, and advice as sort of stopping at, at many points along the way, um, for, uh, feedback, um, on how to strengthen the investigation. The next steps for us, uh, will be, uh, a second training on Title Six, um, and, uh, that investigator training, which will be scheduled this fall, and finishing the development of consistent district-wide complaint procedures related to discriminatory harassment and review of further training needs. I'm sure there's a common process that will be followed at all schools, um, pre-K through twelve, um, in the system, and then supported, um, school teams supported with relevant professional development, uh, professional development. And then on August twenty-fifth, we expanded even further with more than seventy, um, of our administrative leaders from across all of our schools at Wheelock College for a kickoff, um, of the school year. I opened that meeting with sharing, um, data, including the relevant staff survey datas from last spring, um, student learning data, my impressions of what I'd heard over the past few months, um, from listening and learning, um, from teachers and, and various, um, members of the, uh, Brookline community. After that introductory session, we broke into two separate sessions, uh, one led by Dr. Susie Tlukdar and myself, um, uh, on educational equity, and the other led by, uh, Nicole Gittens and Leslie Ryan Miller, um, on performance evaluation. Um, in the educational equity session, um, our administrators shared pers- personal reactions and stories based on prompts related to diversity and equity. And in the evaluation session, administrators discussed and provided input on the evaluation planning, um, for the new school year. Um, again, in response to the staff surveys, um, from last spring, um, across the system about evaluations and, and the, um, identified needs for next steps. I mean, the afternoon, we split into two groups with, um, Brookline High School leaders working together on the educational plan for the high school's expansion work, um, while our pre-K, pre-K through eight leaders and our curriculum coordinators made progress in school-based professional development, um, planning this year. It was, uh, an incredible five days. Um, I wish that we had ten, uh, as everyone has said to me over the last, um, several days, I can't believe school has started, and, um, you know, it's, it, 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 it again was incredibly, incredibly powerful work, um, and it has led us to, uh, in response to feedback we received, to, um, a, a, uh, new vision for the ongoing leadership teamwork, um, that will happen throughout the year, which will be every Monday, and will be, uh, a rotating configuration of principals with senior leadership, principals and vice principals, senior leadership and principals, vice principals, coordinators, and senior leadership, um, and really increasing the opportunity. Um, and really increasing the opportunities for all, um, of those, uh, various parts of the, the district leadership team to work together, um, and, and continuing what was started, um, through very, uh, five very successful days.
That's next, I think.
Uh, so as a final piece, I, uh, wanted to share, um, the, uh, an update on entry plans for both, um, our deputy superintendent for teaching and learning and deputy superintendent for student services. Uh, both, uh, Ms. Gittens and Mr. Zimmerman have jumped in, I mean, both feet first, um, in, into their work and hit the ground running and, um, have been in schools, have, uh, been meeting with families, have, uh, just been, uh, deeply engaged in the immediate work while also, uh, beginning their entry process. Um, and for the Office of Teaching Learning, Ms. Gittens has identified the following initial areas of focus. Um, one, number one is, um, in collaboration with the deputy superintendent for student services, begin to develop a district-wide professional development plan. Uh, number two is to support, uh, support the teacher observation, feedback and evaluation process so that it is aligned with our four district goals. Number three is begin aligning the work of curriculum coordinators and principals to create a coherent district-wide expectation, uh, for proficient instructional practices. And number four is to build a cohesive team among all of our curriculum coordinators. Um, and similarly, um, Mr. Zimmerman has identified, uh, five areas, um, through his listening and learning and through meeting with, uh, with, um, members of the wide-ranging, um, uh, diverse members of the, uh, our school community and Brookline community. Uh, has identified, one, connecting with staff, faculty and district leaders and parents, including CPAC, to support relationship building. Number two, identify areas of focus for the district after meeting with department teams. Number three is to assess student service division, operational and organizational strengths and weaknesses. Number four is to engage community stakeholders in reflective and transformative planning to identify, um, the components of a five-year plan. Number five is in collaboration with our deputy superintendent of teaching and learning, develop an aligned district-wide professional development plan. Um, and in November, uh, both deputies will provide me with a summary of what they have learned during their entry plan process and they will update the committee again at that time. Um, I'll add that I am, uh, well into my entry plan work. Um, I've met with nearly everybody who I identified in July, um, after, uh, we created that list, uh, at the workshop. Um, then, uh, when Mary Ellen Dunn and I were talking about it, it grew bigger, um, and, um, I am nearly done meeting with everyone, um, and, uh, continuing the, the work sort of into, um, early October, uh, to be done with that initial phase of the entry planning. I will add that the, um, Massachusetts Association of School Superintendents, new superintendent induction program, um, is proving to be extremely valuable and beneficial, um, with the relevance, um, uh, I'll call it coursework, the trainings, um, which are scheduled once a month. Uh, and I've been matched with a mentor through that program, which is Dr. Erwin Blummer, who, um, you all know, um, and we are meeting with regu- on a regular basis. He came and attended the entire, um, uh, August twenty-fifth workshop at Wheelock, for example, and then afterwards we met for about an hour, um, to debrief the workshop, to discuss possible next steps. Um, and as you know, with his deep experience, um, his support as a mentor is just, uh, is invaluable, um, in this work. Um, I want to add two final, uh, pieces of the entry plan, which is actually for our, our, um, new school leaders. Um, and that is just to, uh, to share with the committee that we have moved forward again, um, through generous support from the Brookline Education Foundation, uh, with identifying formal mentors for our new school leaders. Um, in the high school, Tony Perintazi, who's the former superintendent of Somerville, uh, Public Schools, uh, currently is a, is a superintendent of, uh, Nahat Public Schools two days a week. Um, and, uh, is working with Somerville on their high school construction project, is, um, serving as a mentor to Anthony Meyer. Um, and Janet Palmer Owens, who is here in the audience tonight, uh, former chief academic officer of the Boston Public Schools, uh, as well as a long-serving principal of the Mason School. Um, uh, Janet is, um, serving as a mentor to the lower devotion team, um, because they lost their mentor early last year, uh, when Dr. Conley, uh, became the interim superintendent as well as, uh, Brian Denisio at Lincoln. Um, and then Dr. Conley, um, is serving in a mentoring, uh, role for our new but very experienced principals at Pierce and Lawrence. Um, so a very, very exciting and, and I believe very comprehensive, um, range of supports for our very new, um, and very excited team.
This was a tour de force, first, uh, superintendent's report, um, incredibly exciting. Um, there might be questions, but if it's okay, we will postpone them until afterwards. Um, but that was terrific, thank you so much, and it was great to have all of the staff here. So we are heading up to the sixth floor, please don't Terry, um, p- bring your, uh, name card and recognize that there may be members of the public in this room and so take anything you deem important, uh, with you. And we'll be back down here in an hour and a half.
Who are you missing?
One, two, nine, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, eleven, we're fine, we're good.
Okay. Okay, I think, uh, we're ready to get started and, uh, this is the, um, uh, first of a, a, a number of meetings in the, really the final phase of, uh, the school site, elementary school site selection process. Uh, it's been a long time coming, um, there's been a lot of meetings, a lot of, uh, process to date. Um, there've been a, a whole bunch of, uh, phases, uh, starting way back when with B-Space, uh, three years ago. And, uh, hopefully, at the end of this process, uh, we'll have a, a site that we can start really focusing on. Um, I'll, I'll, I'll make one announcement and this is, uh, interesting to me. Uh, right, uh, start us, I think, just last week or two, uh, Board of Selectmen and School Committee meetings are being broadcast in HD. But only on RCN. Comcast isn't doing it in HD, so if you want to see us in HD and you're an RCN subscriber, it's on channel six thirteen. And you'll see us, I guess, in clearer living color. You'll see us words in all.
Wait, this is good news or?
Well, I had to start off, uh, with a li- on a light note. So, um, I'm going to turn, uh, would you like to?
No, hooray, I'm just so glad we're here, thank you all for coming.
So I'd like to turn over the, uh, podium to, uh, Mary Ellen Dunn, kind of walk us through the first part of the, uh, uh, meeting and, um, okay. Go right ahead.
Good evening, I'm Mary Ellen Dunn, I'm the deputy superintendent for administration.
Why don't you, uh, the mic?
Microphone over, yeah, there we go.
And I, podium's a little skewed. Um, I'd like to welcome everybody this evening. I want to make sure that the public is aware that this is a meeting where there is, uh, no public comment tonight. There are opportunities for the public to provide input, we're going to cover those opportunities as part of the presentation this evening. Um, I also want to make sure that the public is aware, um, that we are, we've updated our ninth school website. So there's exhaustive, um, information there with regards to upcoming meetings, um, documents that have been presented at public meetings. So if there's, um, any information that you'd like to have that's on the website, which is Brookline dot K twelve dot M A dot U S forward slash school nine. Um, this evening, we're going to be talking, just do a quick overview on how we got here. Um, Jonathan Levy and, uh, Philip Gray are here from Jonathan Levy Architects to provide, uh, the committee with additional information and the board will begin their discussions with, tonight with regards to, um, questions, um, so they can make a decision about site selection. So again, just as a review for, um, the current, the boards, uh, Board of Selectmen and the school committee, but for the public is that we have had a dramatic K through eight enrollment since two thousand and five. Uh, most, most significantly, I think it's important for the community to be aware that we've added two, the equivalent of two K through eight elementary schools in the last ten years. And we're projected to actually add a third, um, equivalent to the size of Lawrence, um, in the next five years. So this, we're attending, the ninth school and this location of its site is, um, one where we are projecting to ease some of our overcrowding that we've had. Some, you've, as you may have been aware, the community has been aware that we've been, um, adding modulators, uh, we've added ca- uh, capacity to devotion. That's included in this information, in our projections and, um, proceeding, um, to address our ever-growing enrollment, um, issues. We will, the school committee will receive an updated projection, um, sometime mid-November, uh, for another, uh, five-year and ten-year projection at that time. Um, and that will be an annual occurrence going forward. So one of the questions that we, um, regularly address is what will happen if we don't build a new elementary school? Uh, we'll continue to have a shortage of twenty-seven to thirty classrooms, we'll have undersized cafeterias, our, we'll continue to have inadequate core facilities. Um, and most importantly, and I think the most, um, concerning to, to many families is that we will continue to have our class size increase. Um, last year, uh, last school year, we had seven classes, classrooms with more than twenty-five students. If we don't build a ninth school, we'll be looking at seventy-five students with more than twenty-five students per classroom.
Seventy-five classrooms.
Seventy-five classrooms with more than twenty-five students in them. Um, and their, our class size will range from eighteen to thirty, um, on a, on a regular basis. So part of, uh, also to remind the community and the, and the boards and the committees is that we have been, uh, the school department has been reviewing this enrollment growth, uh, since two thousand and nine with a facilities master plan. Um, the two thousand and thirteen, uh, report, which is known as B-Space, uh, two thousand and fourteen, the override study committee reviewed the enrollment projections with an, uh, MIT team to make sure that those were, um, had, had valid methodology. And then, uh, the Civic MOXI report, which was commi- commissioned in December of two thousand and fourteen, which has brought us to identifying possible locations for ninth elementary school. So what we've done since two thousand and eight is we've added, uh, fifty-four classrooms to, as an expanded place since two thousand and eight. Um, six classrooms were built at Heath, four at Lawrence, two at Baker, um, with two modular classrooms at Baker, eleven beep classrooms, which, uh, have moved to rental space. So we have now, we are now leasing commercial space for classroom and office space within the school department. Three classrooms of rentals, actually now four, that actually needs to be updated. We now have four classrooms at, um, for Pierce in rental space and we have a new, brand-new school for, uh, devotion that will add twelve classrooms when that project is actually fin- finally finished. So in summary, we've really relocated, created, converted, expanded and reclaimed classroom space wherever we could find it. Um, and it added over a million dollars in lease costs for rental space and commercial, um, buildings for classroom and administrative offices. So we're, what's new information, um, since October fifteenth, um, we have the Civic Mo- as a summary, the Civic MOXI report identified twenty-six possible sites, uh, with a recommendation for six. The Board of Selectmen and School Committee, uh, voted the construction of a new school, uh, and is a preferred option for the, addressing the enrollment growth. We've conducted fourteen public meetings, joint board meetings, public hearings, uh, since that time. The, um, Board of Selectmen, uh, School Committee, Advisory Committee, all voted to forego MSBA, uh, partnership for this ninth school. And as well as a side note for the high school expansion, which you'll be hearing more about at future meetings. Um, and then also, um, based on input, October through January, the boards voted to study three sites and those are the sites that the boards will hear summaries of this evening. And also at this point, um, is really also an opportunity in a time where the, um, Board of Selectmen and the School Committee- Um, also during the public comment process, there were three sites that emerged from public input. Those were Pine Manor College, Borland Hospital and, um, Pinewood Meadows.
Putterham.
Sorry, Putterham Meadows, excuse me. Um, all of those entities are, are viable, um, commercial entities and they are all, um, intending to continue under their current use.
Well, that's Pine Manor and.
Pine Manor, Borland and Putterham.
Putterham is a town on Gulf Horse.
Gulf Horse, which they're intending to continue in their current use.
Which is protected under Article ninety-seven and has wetland issues and other challenges.
There, um, and so with, with that be, um, uh, we can pause there for the boards to consider, um, any of those sites to remove, those as part of any discussion before moving forward.
I'll make one statement. Um, I think there was, uh, some reluctance, uh, from, from the chairs to offer a motion to remove sites until we were assured that finalist sites, uh, weren't in fact viable. Um, we, 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 we as a joint, as joint boards, vo- voted to focus on three finalist sites, but we did so without the expertise and, and of, of, of our site selection consultants and, 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 and without seeing the results of, of, of what that study would show. And I think we're, we're at a point where we, we do have some viable sites, so I'm comfortable personally with beginning to take sites off, but I'm going to offer a motion which is going to have the words at this time because as we go on, um, I, I, I fully expect the sites to remain viable, but just in case, um, uh, the, the, at this time language, uh, permits us to have a vote later, should it be necessary to bring a site back in, while I don't expect that to happen, but leave the door open. But that would take, uh, uh, an affirmative vote from the boards to do that. Uh, is there any, well, I'll, I'll, I'll tell you the, let me, let me read the motion that I'm going to offer and then we can offer it up for a discussion. Uh, the motion is to remove from consideration at this time, the following locations for the citing of a ninth elementary school. Cottage Farm, Amory Street, TJ Maxx, five twenty-five Harvard Street, Center Street Parking Lot, Coolidge Corner, Old Lincoln School, Walnut Street, the Isabel School at Lars Anderson Park, Pine Manor College, Heath Street, Bornwood Hospital, South Street and Putterham Meadows.
I'll second it.
Okay. Any discussions from the board?
I would like to, um, remove from the at-this-time list Cottage Farm and Isabel School because I think that we should take those off permanently. I think there too many problems with them and, and, uh, you know, there's a great, uh, opposition to that in the community.
Well, I think, um, my only thought on that is that we've, we've removed things permanently before and, um, and they seem to come back. So, um, I, I, it just feels like the at-this-time language gives us the clearest path forward, meaning it formalizes what we've done because now there are some viable sites, recognizing that we don't have a school until we have a school and.
Well, I, I don't think there's any way that those two sites can come back.
So.
Ms. Stone, have you?
Stone. Um, regardless of what any of us, I think, might determine to be, um, likely or unlikely sites to come back to the table if, um, if needed, I think it's a mistake to, um, to parse this list. I think the, the at-this-time as a, as a broad and sweeping, um, introductory statement for the motion makes a lot of sense and I think we're just going to spend too much time, um, discussing whether or not to take certain sites off the list. Um, I think even with the, even, even with the at-this-time, it serves our purpose, which is to take them off the list, to make people exhale to a certain extent and to let us get on with the, the business at hand.
Are you willing to accept that?
Well, uh, no. I'd like to.
Okay, then I'll push for a vote.
The only vote that's one fine, but.
Well, so there's an amendment and so is there a second to the amendment?
I'll second it.
Okay. So then we vote on the amendment.
So, um, let me just add with respect to the, uh, Amory Street, uh, site. Um, you know, I, I think that we have an opportunity to engage with BU to, um, uh, put some restrictions on that site so that, you know, if it's not used for a school, sorry, it's not used for a school, uh, they cannot use it for, I, I, at an earlier meeting said a dorm, but whatever they, you know, could use it for, that would take it out of the open space category that it's currently in. So I think taking that off gives us an opportunity to begin those discussions and that, that's my main concern there.
I think it's semantics, but, uh, we would have that opportunity, but anyway.
Um, assuming we're in discussion of the amendment.
Yes.
Um, I intend to vote against the amendment for the following reason, that it brings us into a discussion of sites other than the three sites that we're here to talk about tonight and to Ms. Stone's point, I, I think that that's not a productive use of our time.
So let me, uh, if, if there's any other discuss, if there's no other discussion, let me, um, uh, ask for a vote on Bernard's amendment. What Bernard's amendment would, uh, do is have the at-this-time language for all the sites except for Cottage Farm and, uh, Isabel?
Yes.
Um, and then the at-this language for, at-this-time for all the others. Um, so what, probably the way to do this is to poll the two boards separately.
Sure.
Could I just say one thing?
Yeah.
Um, well, I agree with Bernard that there's probably no way we're ever going to bring these sites back. I also would hope there's a couple of other sites on there we would never bring back, like the Lincoln School. So I'm going to vote, I, I won't vote, I won't support the amendment, but I just want you all to know that I'm not, you know, I don't see us bringing back really any of these sites, to be truthful. So, uh, but I think rather than parse it and spend the time going through it and doing all that, we should just move on and get to the business at hand, which are the three sites that we've been focusing on recently.
I, I fully agree with Selectman Heller. It just seems that we're, we're not voting for those two. We're, we're voting to just end this so we can move on to the three.
Okay, so the first motion is for Bernard's amendment. An, a yes, uh, is, would adopt Bernard's language, a no would, uh, move us to the original, uh, motion. So first off.
A, a yes would result in two motions, one with the, you know.
Yeah, okay, that, that's fair. So, uh, for the selectmen first, all those in favor of Bernard's motion, please say aye. Selectman Daley?
No.
Selectman Heller?
No.
Selectman Green?
Yes.
And Chair votes no.
For the School Committee.
Win some, you lose some.
For the School Committee, we'll just go around. Mr. Pollak?
No.
Ms. Chalbowski?
No.
Mr. Chang?
To try.
Mr. Chang? Dr. Jackson?
No.
Ms. Stone?
No.
Ms. Gatta?
No.
Ms. Graham?
No.
And the Chair votes no.
Okay, so the motion fails. The, the motion on the table is the original motion, which has all, all, uh, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight sites with the at-this-time language to remove from consideration at this time, the following locations, which I read. Uh, poll the selectmen first, all those in favor, please say aye. Selectman Daley?
Aye.
Selectman Heller?
Aye.
Selectman Green?
Aye.
Chair votes aye.
Uh, for the School Committee, Mr. Pollak?
Yes.
Uh, Ms. Chalbowski?
Yes.
Mr. Chang?
Yes.
Dr. Jackson?
Yes.
Ms. Stone?
Yes.
Ms. Gatta?
Yes.
Ms. Graham?
Yes.
And the Chair votes yes. You're all out of order, so I'm trying to remember your order.
Okay, so, uh, the motion is accepted and the sites are officially removed and I would like to invite, uh, Selectman Franco back into the discussion. So let me just poke my, yeah, okay.
Here's a lot to catch up on.
Yeah.
Are we starting from the beginning?
At this time, you can return.
I should note for the record that, uh, I've, uh, will be filing in the morning a conflict of interest disclosure, just to explain my lack of participation up until this point and my, the reason why I'm rejoining the conversation, so. Anybody that's interested, visit Town Clerk in the morning.
Welcome, Selectman Franco.
It will be a boring morning. Uh, Ms. Dunn?
So, um, just in case you want to catch up with, uh, Selectman Franco here, the meetings that we've conducted, the fourteenth, um, since October, um, and visit our website for the extensive document research that's available. Um, and we put these here for the community to know that this has been a longstanding process, um, and, um, I really want to reinforce and we actually need to add Town Council to this list. Um, this has been a very collaborative, um, process with, uh, boards, committees and departments, uh, within the town and I think it's, um, quite remarkable, um, the partnership that's really been occurring, um, and the helpful planning and suggestions among all department heads and, um, departments and boards and commissions to really look at this issue with regards to the placement of a ninth school. Um, so I just want to, um, really be complimentary to, uh, and, and let the citizens know that they have a very, um, collaborative, um, town and school department, um, partnership happening around the school and, um, the best minds and the most creative minds are actually trying to really get at what is a good answer, um, for the next step. So with that, um, it's my pleasure to introduce, uh, Jonathan Levy and his, um, associate, Philip Gray, who will be bringing you guys through their, um, their findings of the three sites.
Very good, Mary Ellen. Thank you very much and, uh, I, I would like to reinforce the sentiment that you just expressed and, and say how impressed I've been with the level of cooperation and the functionality of, uh, both staff and, uh, elected officials that we've experienced working on this very complex and difficult problem. So today, uh, we, we are here to start to summarize, um, the results of this, uh, now over three-month, uh, study that we've been conducting, uh, together with, uh, all of you and with community input and significant community input that has altered the course in some ways of, of what we've done. Uh, but first I want to remind you, uh, I ha- I need to reveal a little bit of a mystery about the process of working on a, on a, on a, on a, a rather large, uh, community-based project such as this. So the work that we as architects do, and this is directed, I suppose, my audience tonight is really the, uh, the two committees, but this is directed to you. The work that we do is organized into phases of, uh, ascending levels of detail and complexity of information. And the reason for that is because you don't want to pay for a lot of complexity upfront on something which may not, uh, be viable. So essentially we dip our toe in and then we feel, sense, feel the water and then if it feels okay, then we get a leg in and then, uh, we, or, and then we immerse ourselves in a given approach. So what I've done here is just giving you a sense, because there'll be questions that people will ask, well, you know, do, and how do you get, uh, trash trucks, uh, to that location or, you know, where, you know, if there's the auditorium, where will the people park? And, you know, there's a lot of questions I'm not able to answer now because we haven't invested the time to, to do the design. So just to give you a graphic representation of these orders of complexity, if you look at this slide here, I've, I've brought along, uh, examples from other projects. Uh, here is our very own site selection study and you can see all, the order of, uh, of, of information is on the basis of gross, uh, shapes and sizes of buildings, parking, driveways and open space. Those are the major components that we're studying and we're having to make assumptions about, about sizes. We, we have information in terms of the numbers of students and the, uh, corresponding numbers of, of buses and cars that the, that those would imply, uh, but generally we're working with very rough, uh, 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 pieces of the puzzle. In the next phase of work, uh, which we're about to undergo, uh, at the, towards the end of, uh, this month and next month, there will be decisions about which site and then we'll be able to dig into a particular place. And this is the kind of drawings that we'll start to produce then, which will be drawings that actually show the arrangement of, of internal program space, academic space, core spaces like, uh, gymnasium and cafeteria. And we'll start to judge the relationship of those spaces in relationship to one another, but also in relationship to their, uh, their adjacent outdoor and, uh, spaces and how those can serve them. So that's, that's the order of, of magnitude of, of information that we'll have, uh, during the next phase of work. This is called the feasibility, this is called the feasibility stage. So we're in the site selection stage now and, uh, then we'll be in the feasibility stage, which will last some three to four months. And then after that, and only after that, will we engage on the start of an actual, on the design of an actual building, where I'll be able to answer questions like where does the dumpster go and, 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 and what kind of a mechanical system, the engineers and my other consultants, sustainability, um, uh, civil, uh, many of those will start to come into play with a lot more detail. So I've just, I'm sort of trying to prepare the ground for you to understand what kinds of questions, and nothing that you ask me will be out of order, but, uh, you know, the kinds of questions I actually will, will be able to answer, given the time that we've expended on many different alternatives, so that, none of which we can know in the, in the, in the, in the way that, uh, for example, in this, these are schematic design drawings, where you're actually starting to see the, the thicknesses of walls, locations of elevators, mechanical systems, and also, uh, very importantly, what the building will look like and how it will fit into its adjacent context. So as a recap, uh, we're looking at three sites, the Village Site, which is in North Brookline on, um, Harvard Ave, Harvard Street, uh, the Baldwin Site, uh, which is located off of Route Nine, and then the Baker Site, which is, uh, off of Beverly Street, uh, the Waldron Street is also, uh.
Beverly Road.
I'm sorry.
Beverly Road, sorry.
Uh, and the Baldwin Site, which also is in conjunction with the Sewell Recreation Complex. And these are the, this is, this is the entire array of alternatives that we're looking at now that, uh, you have available for reference, uh, on placemats in, in front of you. And they're organized into three pe- components, um, the Baker Site, the Baldwin and the Village. Now let's sort something out. Um, in the past, we've been looking at different options for each site. Our job is not to choose an option for a site. The reason why we have multiple options, uh, for each site was to demonstrate the capacity of that site and the flexibility of use and the different types of buildings and arrangements that we could accommodate for each one of those sites. And I tried to exercise my imagination to the extent possible to see, to really probe the corners of each site and, and really push each site as far as, as far as we could. But our work today and going forward is not to judge between alternative arrangements for each site. Our work is to judge between three sites. So when we start to, uh, consider evaluation, we're going to be looking at the three sites in relationship to one another. And that word, relationship, is very important because the criteria that we're applying, hopefully systematically, to judging the three sites, so that it's not just a guess, oh, I like that site or I like that, or I think that one might work, but we'll actually be able to go through a whole system of criteria and make lists of, of where, uh, sites are making the mark and where they're not and, or where there's exciting potential and, and where there isn't. Um, that, that, um, that process will be between the three sites relatively speaking, not in the absolute terms. Uh, it has been said that none of these sites is ideal. I'm not really sure that's the right way to. But our work today and going forward is not to judge between alternative arrangements for each site. Our work is to judge between three sites. So when we start to consider evaluation, we're going to be looking at the three sites in relationship to one another. And that word, relationship, is very important because the criteria that we're applying, hopefully systematically, to judging the three sites, so that it's not just a guess, oh, I like that site, or I like that, or I think that one might work. But we'll actually be able to go through a whole system of criteria and make lists of where sites are making the mark and where they're not, and, or where there's exciting potential and where there isn't. That process will be between the three sites, relatively speaking, not in the absolute terms. It has been said that none of these sites is ideal. I'm not really sure that's the right way to frame the problem. I think they're actually, the good news, and probably this is the summative statement that I should make at the very beginning, all three of these sites, we believe can work. It's just they will work according to different goals that the school committee and the selectmen may bring to them. And those are the ones that I'm going to explain to you today. You'll notice that one of the options for the Baker Site, Option E, is in a slightly different graphic. This is to call out the fact that we added it since the last time we came together at the request of staff and others who were interested in seeing an alternative for the Baker Site that did not, for comparison purposes, that did not touch in any way the existing Baker School, which we all know is under, is overcapacity. And that overcapacity issue affects not only the operation of the school, but also the operation of the neighborhood around it and how comfortable it is to be around that school. So Baker E has been added, and I'll explain that to you in a minute. So I'm going to rush through the, you have already seen many of these, most of these. I'm going to rush through them, touching on some of the highlights of each scheme for these three different sites. But I'm not going to dwell on that because we've already done that in some detail in the past. So there are, in fact, five alternatives in play for the Baker School. The first of them involves creating two K through eight schools. The existing one, which would be augmented to accommodate, or right size, as we started to say, to accommodate its additional, its surplus 200 student population. And then on, to the rest would be a new K through eight school on its own site. And the two would share surface parking between them. Surface parking, we explored immediately because it's much less expensive. They're making structured parking. This is a three-dimensional view of that. And then there would be an alternative to make two independent schools that would have structured parking. In this case, parking below because it's cheaper and easier to make parking below a building than it is to create an entirely separate building for them, which in any case, we don't really have a site footprint for. And by the way, you can follow around along on the upper right-hand corner, if you're interested in the metrics. I've summarized, you know, some of the key metrics because a lot of what the neighborhoods are going to be interested in, if the school and my site in my neighborhood were being altered, I would be very interested in how it was going to impact my ability to get around the neighborhood. And that has a lot to do with parking. It has to do with parent queuing. Parent queuing is the length required for parents' cars to stack up as they're waiting to drop off or waiting to pick up. Most of the demand is actually on the waiting to pick up side. And then bus queuing, the same thing for buses. And it's hard for us to determine what the requirement is there because that will depend on how the school district determines it's going to, what the source of the students will be. And then finally, the playfield areas, which are reciprocal with the size of the buildings themselves and the parking area. So you can see this is a multi-variable equation that we're working on. So you can follow that on your upper right. I'm not going to bring your attention to it. And we can come back to questions about comparing them later. So B was two schools. That's what it looks like. C was making one large school with four academies in order to give the appropriate cohort size. And there's a three-dimensional view of that. And then Baker D is making, leaving the existing wing of the existing Baker School in place. The other alternatives had removed that in order to allow more flexibility for arranging the site and opening up playfield space, which would be shared between the two schools. And this one retains that. You can see it in pink. The pink is the existing building with selective additions that would allow for us to increase the capacity of that school and right-size it, as I said earlier, three-dimensional. And then finally, the new Baker E scheme, which has been added for apples-to-apples comparisons with the other schemes. Because the other schemes don't actually alter the condition at the existing Baker Schools. So intelligently, we all came to the conclusion that we really need an apples-to-apples comparison. And that would be provided by just building that new ninth school, elementary school, without really touching whether or not we go forward that way. But for comparison purposes, it's putting an additional burden on the Baker Site if we're going to correct the existing school at the same time we build a new one. Although it sort of might make sense to do that. It seems hard to imagine that you would have an overcrowded school right next to a spanking new, a brand-new school, right next to one another. So that's something to consider for the future. So this is how, this is the system that we're using. And in the past, you've seen a diagram that looked like this, a spreadsheet, with all the sites combined together. Today, I'm going to, I've separated those apart. And we're going to look at them site by site. And my job today is not to provide a recommendation or a summit of evaluation. But I am going to try to sort this chart out for you in a way by providing highlights. The architect's highlights, we could call them. And they have to be kept in, you know, within those single quotes. These are our perceptions. And by the way, for all of you, this is a chart that we have filled out. So it would have been impossible for us to go through all, how many cells are there? There are probably, you know, 90 cells or 80 cells together, but that really isn't practical. So we've made a preliminary take at filling out these cells according to plus being highly, being advantageous, zero being neutral, pink being disadvantageous, and dark red being very disadvantageous. And you'll see there isn't really much of very disadvantageous on the Baker Site. And again, I need to emphasize this one more time. These are relative rankings. They're not absolute rankings. So we're comparing one site to another. And I think the thing that I wanted to start out with saying about the Baker School, what a fabulous location for a new school. I know the two schools are not sharing the same site, but what an amazing place to be, with woodland views, with abundant sunlight, with lots of green space. And also, I think it opens intriguing academic possibilities in terms of the possibility for interaction between the two elementary schools. One of the avant-garde aspects of 21st century education is collaboration. And one of the things that happens in 21st century learning schools is that collaboration occurs with larger groups than just a single class. So if you could actually have cross-fertilization of schools. So I think, yes, there's something that we have to consider in terms of putting that many kids on the site, but also, we need to consider the possibility that could be advantageous as well. So could I possibly get through my comments on this site? And maybe, Neil, would you like to take comments site by site? Or should I get through the whole presentation? Because at the end, we're going to see all of these put together.
Let me just, for the public, this is going to be on the website. It is already on the website. So any of you who have phones or computers in the audience, you might get a clearer view of this. I'm kind of torn. Part of me wants to get through this, and then we can talk about it. The other part says to me, you know, while it's fresh, I'm thinking we should get through it.
I think so, too. It would be better if people took notes of their questions, and then we can have a real discussion at the end when we're comparing all three. So on the plus side, we're seeing a lot of possibilities for queuing. I think the neighborhood, the Beverly Road neighborhood, is going to be concerned about traffic because the traffic isn't working today. So one of the things that we can say about that is that it is possible, not only to right-size the school, but to right-size the parking and queuing for the existing school to alleviate the problem that is occurring today, which according to our traffic engineer, primarily centers around the fact that people are parking on Beverly Road and constricting the width of the road so that people can't get past. So that is an issue that can be solved. And the new school, for certain, if, whether or not we improve the existing school's contribution to neighborhood congestion, the new school, we can certainly design so it does not contribute anything additional by having all the cars which are waiting to drop off and pick up, all the buses which are waiting to drop off and pick up, and all the teachers that are now parking into the neighborhood, parking on the site. So all the activity is on the site. We can easily accomplish that, given the 11, over 11 acres of land that we have to work with at the Baker Site. One of the difficulties of the Baker Site, it's not really a difficulty, is that the open space would need to be shared between the two schools. And if we take, in fairness, if we take the open space and divide it by the number of students at both schools, we end up with something like 100 square feet per student. So within the Brookline system, and I apologize if this is seeming like a belabor, it's going to take a long time for me to get through all of this content. The overall Brookline school system, the range is something like 64 to 200. So square feet per student of open playfield space. And lots of caveats about what open playfield space really means. What it really means is how you can lay out athletic fields on that space. So just sheer space isn't necessarily valuable, but at this gross level of comparison, that's kind of the tool that we're using. So it's not, it's not an abundant amount of playfield space. And when you get to the Village Site, you'll see, you know, that's below the 64 square feet. So that's very negative in terms of the playfield space available. But it is not the worst, would not be the worst within the district, even taking into consideration the sharing of the site by the two schools. So that's one of the areas where we see some pink on the chart. Another area is in terms of landscape conservation because there are some beautiful trees there that would need to be removed in order to allow for us to have places for the kids to play and places for cars to get off of Beverly Road. And then finally, and most importantly, and we're right in the midst of resolving this issue as best as we can right now, is the adjacency to wetlands. There's the whole nature sanctuary is right next door. There are setbacks that are required from wetlands. That sanctuary is wetlands up to near the boundary of the school-owned property. But we think they can be overcome, but we're checking right now. And we haven't had that key because of the summer absences. We haven't had that key meeting with conservation to determine the likelihood that we'll be able to work within that wetland setback, which is often the case. So we have presence. We have knowledge working on other projects that within a setback, we can do, we can work. And several of our schemes for that site require us to be within that setback. So that's my summary of the Baker Site. Now, let's move on to Baldwin. So Baldwin, we studied, we actually studied three configurations for the Baldwin. Two K through eight configurations at 800 students. One that would retain the existing teeny-tiny Baldwin School, but charming building that's on Heath Street that many of us know. And then there's a three-dimensional view of that. And then the second one, which would remove that, allowing for more space for the building footprint and for vehicles. We also looked at a high school alternative, which it really isn't germane to our conversation any longer. So as that high school process has split off and is taking its own course now. So we're only looking at two alternatives for this. And we've pretty much concluded that it's not viable to leave the existing school there because it constricts the footprint that we can use and therefore increases the height of the building. And we know that this is the most impactful of neighbors of the various schemes. So we want to be very sensitive to those neighbors and reduce the height of the building as much as possible. So when we get to the evaluation matrix, so-called, you'll see that there are some concerns about the adjacency to neighbors. But most importantly, that's reflected in limitations on our ability to be certain that we can fit the program on within a finely negotiated height and building footprint. We're not certain that we can do that. That, we know that that is going to be an iterative process involving a conversation with that neighborhood. So that's, whereas at the Baker, we're quite certain that we can. So that turns that into the red. Also, of course, future expansion potential because of the limited footprint. And then one other area that's creating pink and red is the question of vehicle access. So that's, that particular site, if we go back, here I am going to draw your attention to the metrics. We're shooting to have 120 parking spaces. No problem with that. That is being provided, again, through the abundant cooperation that we received working with Parks and Rec. In the upper-left corner of this picture here, you can see that extensive parking lot. Some of the spaces would be a portion to the school, some would be a portion to the Sewell. But the loops that are, the parking loops that we can't put on the Sewell Recreation Site because they're exclusively for the school itself, those are restricted in length. So the parent queuing, our traffic engineer wants us to have at least 800 lineal feet of parent queuing for the 800 student population. And we can only achieve 600 on, because of the very limited size, the limited size of the site. On the plus side, this is a fabulous site in terms of town cooperation and efficiency because the school would be able to take advantage of the Sewell playfields. We wouldn't have to build those playfields. That's, you'll notice in a moment when we get to the cost, and I'm going to share that with you tonight because we've done an estimating exercise, that the cost of building this school, because of its limited footprint and higher height likely, but also because the playfields are already, at least one of them is in existence on artificial turf, and the other one we would have to make adjustments to. So there's an efficiency. We're kind of piggybacking on the open space there. But bus queuing is very negative, and it's likely that there would be some bus access to this site. Again, we don't know how many buses we have to accommodate, so we're not able to create a threshold for that as we have with parent queuing. But 160 feet, that's along Heath Street here. And again, the busing has to be entirely separate from the parent queuing. 160 feet is only going to yield, say, four school buses queuing up at a time, which is, you know, quite a limited number. So that's kind of a summary of where we are with the Baldwin. It has some negatives. It has a great positive of sharing that site with the Sewell. It has the negative of having limited space for vehicles to move around. Those are the highlights, I believe. And that negative is pretty significant for those of us who try to get around Hammond Street and Route Nine. We all know, you can't, you just can't get around. The traffic is backing up along Hammond Street. We considered access to the site from Hammond Street, but already, traffic is backing up in the morning all the way to Beaver. And along Heath Street, there's limited capacity there. So we definitely don't want cars backing up onto Heath Street because that's going to exacerbate the traffic problem. So there's kind of a red flag in that area as well. By the way, all these sites have very similar characteristics in terms of the buildability of the sites. Brookline is a place that has a lot of ledge, stone underneath, rock that's underneath the surface of the town. And they all will require excavation of rock, whether you're at the Baker-Baldwin or the Village Site. And now moving to the Village Site. So we looked at quite a few alternatives here. The reason, in effect, the Village Site is a refresher was two sites because we looked at two acquisition scenarios, both of which would involve allowing the stop-and-shop to remain in operation in the future and quite possibly even during construction. One site with a reduced footprint that did not include the scrub-a-dub and the gas station, and another site with an expanded footprint that did include those. and another site with an expanded footprint that did include those. And then for each of these options, we also studied the possibility of access from the rear up to Aspen Wall. Interestingly, traffic, which I initially started the study thinking, well, that's a total deal breaker for the Village site, traffic is quite manageable on the Village site. The reason, now, the reason for this is that all the queuing can be accommodated. If you look at the queuing, let me see if I can get to a plan that shows queuing. Yeah, if you look at the queuing space that's possible here, let me get the arrow working. If we're entering on the western corner of Harvard and the site, this would be an entrance into a garage shared in this scenario by the store and the school. You're actually circumnavigating the entire perimeter of the site. All of that is available for queuing. So, all the parking, all the queuing, and all the bus, the bus would be limited because of its location. We're assuming that kids are going to be able to walk to the school more than they would be elsewhere since a lot of the demand is in the northern part of Brookline. So, the traffic issue has really turned out quite well. The pluses for this site, well, what a fabulous site. It would kill two birds with one stone. First, it would put the school where the kids are needed, where it's needed. Second, it would plug an open hole in the city fabric. I'm sure the urban designers among us are very excited about that possibility. And third, just by circumstance, it happens to be oriented very nicely in terms of solar harvesting for sustainability. And it's inherently more sustainable to build a school in an urban location on a compact site. The negatives, let's go to that column. I'm not going to go through all the iterations, we've done that before. The negatives concern playgrounds. You can see where the bright red is. Because the playfield space would be on the roof of the Stop and Shop store. It would be necessarily limited for that reason. It's either pink or red. And then security, there's some concern about the kids being, they would, yes, they would be inherently less secure on that urban site with many different kinds of people walking around the store, for example, than they would be on the suburban, more suburban site. And then, most importantly, are the risks involved? So we're evaluating not only what we know, but what we know we might not know in terms of risk. Risk to schedule, risk to cost, risk to completion for this very emergent project which needs to, a certain degree of certainty in terms of its schedule and also cost. And there's a lot of moving pieces involved in the Village School in terms of legal work, acquisition work, and also some real unknowns in terms of costs because we're not, we can't do the negotiation now to determine what the commercial participation would be in this site and what the actual acquisition cost would be. So we have to put a much larger range on that site than we would on the others. So if we, that now, that's a good segue into the, some of the conclusions. Now, what I've done is I've joined all three of these matrices together, these columns together. So you can see the map of potential decision-making. And you can see, you know, in a holistic way, where the red is and where the green is. Again, all these sites are seen to us viable in some way. Baldwin, I would qualify by saying that the traffic issues that I mentioned earlier and the capacity issues that I mentioned earlier, we could adjust by reducing the population of the school possibly. It might not be an eight hundred student school. And we might still get some relief by building there, but it might not be the full relief of eight hundred students that we were looking for. But also, at the end, we've added, at the bottom here, we've added some notes about cost. So we did set our estimator, Richard Marks of Detolus Estimating at Work. Richard is a person with enormous depth of experience estimating school projects all around the state. He's probably the most active owners' project manager and one of the most active estimators in our area. And he's looked at all of these studies. And the reason why there are a range is, well, there are two reasons why we have a range. So for the Baker site, there's a range of eighty-five million to a hundred million construction cost, not project cost, constructions cost, oh, it is project cost. Including soft costs, I'm being corrected. Eighty-five to a hundred million soft cost for constructing that ninth elementary school on the Baker site. The difference in cost is attributable to the different alternatives that we considered. Did Richard include the rightsizing in that eighty-five to a hundred? So that would be another twenty million dollars, and that's what we determined. The premium to right-size the existing Baker school would be another twenty million dollars. So, we sort of kept that off to the side. Remember, I said I wanted to keep these apples to apples. Don't worry, I'm almost there. Probably another ten minutes and we'll then be able to have our discussion and open up for questions. And then, the Baldwin site is also in that same range, about eighty-five to ninety million dollars. A little less in terms of variation because of there only being two schemes and there being more certainty as to what the approach would be. And then the widest range, of course, comes with the Village site. A hundred and ten million dollars at the low side to a hundred and thirty-five million dollars. And the reason for that discrepancy is just due to the unknowns and the uncertainties about acquisition costs, legal costs, and participation, the degree of participation by the commercial entity. And also, there's some concerns because that was a factory, that there would be hazardous materials on that site. So, that concludes my portion of the presentation. What I've tried to do, again, is not to provide a recommendation. I've tried to give you some of the highlights of the benefits and the disadvantages of each one of these sites. And now, we need to debate among us. So I think it would probably be best for a discussion to kind of focus it site by site. And I think the, Mr. Levy made a point of saying that his firm took a shot at filling in the chart. One of the things, you know, we'll be discussing and then we'll be hearing from the public at future meetings is, are these the right, one, selection criteria factors? And two, is the ranking correct? Did they get it right should we adjust it? So, with that in mind, let me, let's go to the Baker site and open it up for board discussion and questions. Sleckman-Daly.
Yeah, well, I have to take issue with your giving them an advantageous on traffic impacts. We have heard a great deal because Hancock Village, right, which is adjacent to the school, is about to be significantly enlarged. And so we heard a lot from neighbors in that area in connection with that project about extra traffic in the neighborhood. And even more so than Beverly Road is Russet Road, which is a very narrow road coming, which is going to get a lot of Hancock Village people coming out onto it and-
That's to be determined.
Okay, all right. Well, the people were telling me, and I actually went over there one time at eight o'clock when school was in session myself to see. And Russet Road is very, gets very backed up. And it's not just because people are waiting to get into a parking lot or something like that. It's because kids are crossing the street. And they were saying that in particular, if there's like one delivery truck on the street or when the street is, the narrow street is narrowed a little further because of snow, that it's kind of a nightmare. So, I can't believe that even with easier access to a parking area, that you can add, double the number of students to get to sixteen hundred students on that site and not have a serious negative impact on those roads in that area. So I quibble with your giving them pluses, advantageous on the traffic impact. And my other concern is, and I think this is, I do know in schedule and risk factors, you do mention the wetlands concerns at that site. But I think either in topography or storm drainage, I don't know which one would be the right one, but that's a very sensitive ecological area right behind the school. So I suspect that to make sure that there wasn't anything draining into that is going to be a challenge.
If I could respond just for a moment on the traffic. I will, I invite you to come together with our traffic engineer. You actually need to see the data and understand the basis on which he has provided us guidance. So, I can't provide that to you now. But this, we've had a traffic engineer study carefully, looking at the existing movements and so on. And you got to get together with him to hear it more directly.
But, well, so just on that point, I mean, traffic for each of these sites is going to be a big question. So I'm not sure that a one-off meeting with Sleckman-Daly and a traffic engineer is-
Or the committee, I could-
Yeah, I mean, it just might, we do, we're going to have a public hearing on the twenty-second. And so anyway, we have other options if there are a set of traffic questions that people are going to raise tonight about any of the sites. So I just want to put a flag on that one.
Dr. Jackson and then Ms. Scotta.
Thank you for the presentation. For parts of it, you gave us a sense of the parameters and your assumptions about why something was advantageous, neutral, disadvantageous. For example, the piece about the bus queuing and how much space you were trying to estimate for. I wonder if you could do that for the definition of parity with other K-8 schools? Just to understand, when you're saying parity, are you talking about just the size of the site? Are you, what are you talking about when you talk about parity and also proximity to neighbors? Was there a fixed distance that you looked at as sort of saying, this is too far, this is too close? Just so we understand across these sites, because I think of them differently in some ways than they've been rated here.
Let me start with the second one first. So, no, we didn't use a quantitative measure for adjacency to neighbors. We looked at the overall density of the neighborhood and we looked at the adjacency of residential structures to the site. And we subjectively evaluated it that way when we suggested our ranking for that particular item. In terms of parity, parity has to do with the ability of the school and the way it's configured to relate to the standard that's been set by the other schools in the district. The primary differentiation is open space. And I think that was the primary characteristic that we used to distinguish one from the other because the footprints, the accommodation of program, those all seemed like we could take the program given to us in the next phase by the school department and apply that with equal success to any of these sites. It's really more the open space. And of course, open space is very important for K through eight. It's important for recess, it's important for programs both during and after school. Ms. Scotta?
Well, excuse me, both of the people who've spoken have brought up some of my issues. With Baker, the proximity to neighbors, some of those neighbors are simply just across the street or right next to the site on one side. And I would think that that might, that they might have some issues with what you have said here. But more than that, I want to talk about the transportation piece. That now, if you drive down Beverly Road and when people are trying to get into the school, it is a very busy road. Now, I understand the queuing space, but you have to get into the queue and you have to get out of the queue. So there's constant traffic there. Also, I wondered how you determined your parking spaces? Because as I look at them, for example, and I know we're not discussing Baldwin yet, but you've had, you list a hundred and twenty spaces for Baldwin and a hundred and thirty spaces for Baker, when Baker, in fact, will have two schools there. And it has no public transportation to speak of. And I will say to you that many teachers, certainly lower-grade teachers, don't take public transportation often because they carry all kinds of things to school. And when you're carrying all kinds of things to school, you don't want to be in rush hour public transportation. So, I'm just curious about how you determined what, how many parking spaces.
Yeah, so, just to clarify, the hundred and thirty to a hundred and fifty spaces that are being provided by the different schemes at the Baker are in addition to the parking that's already being provided now for the existing Baker school. So this is, this is not including the existing Baker school. And the site is large enough, again, that we could right-size the existing Baker school's parking to get the teacher parking out of the neighborhood. It's that teacher parking that's causing the congestion along Beverly Road. I'm not well-informed about the other street, Nancy, and I have to find out more about that. But along Beverly Road, which are, consultant considered to be the main feeder road for the school, the problem is teacher parking on the road. So we, the new school will be able to accommodate all of that teacher parking on-site. Philip, did you have a question?
A hundred and twenty space number came from the Brookline's traffic department.
Yes, yes, for those of you who couldn't hear, so Philip's reminding me that that hundred and twenty number was actually discerned together with the Brookline's own traffic department. Our traffic engineer had a number, the traffic department had a number, and they reconciled the two to come up with a load that they thought was appropriate for an eight hundred student school on that site. The number for the Baldwin is a hundred and twenty because we really, I have to say, somewhat arbitrarily allocated the over two hundred spaces that we're able to create on that lot between the SUEL recreation center, which does have activities during the school day, and the school. So, you know, that's kind of a moving boundary between the school parking and the SUEL parking. What we're actually showing is two hundred spaces, but we allocated a hundred and twenty of them. And then, again, to clarify, the Village site, we're only showing sixty spaces for the Village site. This is concordant with the findings of the, or the assumptions that were used for the Civic Moxie study where it was assumed that sixty spaces would be adequate given that it was an urban location where many of the students would be coming, walking or using public transportation. Sleckman-Heller.
You mentioned in the beginning of your presentation about Baker that, you know, this, if we did the project, we could correct some of these traffic problems and queuing problems. And I'm wondering whether if we didn't do the project, is there still an opportunity to correct those problems?
Yes, and you know, traffic engineers are always very careful to use, to scold me for using words like correct or fix. They use the term make, improve or make better. Yes, there is a huge opportunity, I think, just because of the inefficiency of the way the Baker's site was laid out to improve the existing condition by providing better queuing space and better parking.
Even if we didn't build a school?
Yes, yeah, yeah, there's a lot of underutilized land. It would again involve a discussion with CONCOM. Ms. Charlofsky?
Yes, thank you. First of all, thank you for this report and the comparison. There's a couple of issues actually I have similar to some of the people here. But from my recollection, the actual parking on-site for the teachers right now, is that where the queuing is going to be happening?
Are we talking about Baker?
Baker, I'm sorry.
The queuing for the new school?
Well, for both, I guess.
In, in the D and E schemes, the circulation, the traffics for the new school is entirely separate than the existing school.
Okay, so that allows the parking to stay there for the-
Yes, as it is untouched, if that is what's preferred, yes.
But the other ones, the A and B?
Intermix them, yes, they do. And those all presuppose a joint project that would both right-size the existing Baker school and add the new school while at the same time taking advantages of- School and add the new school, while at the same time taking advantages of efficiencies of pooling the parking in the center of the site, either in open, at grade or in structured parking.
And that would also necessitate phasing and all those things for, if we're-
Yeah, actually, we worked through this some, somewhat, there is, in our more technical submissions that, to staff, we, we've actually worked through some phasing scenarios for each project to try to understand the, the consequences for, for cost, whether you'd have to build temporaries or not. I think the conclusion for the Baker was that we could probably keep the existing school in operation. And even for the incremental additions to, you know, right-size the school, we would be able to do that through phasing of an occupied building.
So, but just to be clear, for A, B, and C, the existing parking would be gone?
It would, yes.
And all there would be would be the hundred and fifty space-
Three hundred spaces.
Three hundred?
Yes.
That's all under the field or on top?
Uh, different for different schemes. Do you want me to go back there?
I'm just trying to understand.
Sure, let me go back, yeah.
I mean, I don't, we don't need all the details right now, but-
So if we did just look at A, this, this shared parking area in the center of the site, at, at the rear of the site, has been created by a retaining wall, which allows us a two-level playfield along Beverly Road, roughly where the existing one is, but slightly larger, actually quite a bit larger. And then this parking area is, is for three hundred cars, a hundred and fifty for the existing Baker and a hundred and fifty for the new Baker, or the new ninth school. And it, and so on and so forth. The other schemes have the same, except the parking is located underneath the buildings.
Okay, that was what I did, 'cause I heard a hundred and fifty and I didn't hear three hundred.
Yes, that would be for two schools. Again, I'm trying to keep my language on an apples-to-apples basis, yes.
I understand.
Yes, that's right.
It's a little complicated.
No, and the way we proposed it initially was by thinking of the two schools together as one project.
Sure. So the second question I have, you have a, I have here on provides future expansion potential, I'm not sure what that means.
Well, we hear a lot about the, when we look at the, the slides that Mary Ellen has been presenting, we hear a lot about the fact that, that even with an eight hundred school, student ninth school, that is not gonna really correct the problem for the long term. So one of the ways of addressing that would be to select a site and, and, and explore schematic design alternatives for that site that allow for future expansion.
So to make, because I'm seeing green here on Baker and somehow, to me, to expand that site even more than two schools seems to me would be more of a pink and red.
Well, I know that, I know that. I know that, but it's just a quite, there, there's over eleven acres there. I, I know that there's something inherent about the idea of having two schools on one site, but if we just look at the size of the site, you know, just divide it in half with a, with a dash line down the middle, you've still got two over five acre sites, which is very favorable in comparison to others, other sites around the town. So there, there is expansion room there, where there certainly is not at the Baldwin. And there is not at the Village Site with the, the limited alternative acquisition. With the expanded acquisition, I think there is expansion potential even on that site.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, go.
All right, uh, thank you. And first of all, thank you. I know we're just asking a bunch of questions, diving right in and challenging, but we've been at this a long time and we're just excited that there are real, I just wanna go back to, I, I wrote it down, Jonathan, all three can work. And I'm gonna just take that to the bank, I'm excited about that. Having said that, I have a bunch of questions. So one is, I think we heard questions about traffic, and so I think we just need to find a way to make ourselves better educated about the traffic impacts of all of these. I think the, maybe going along with that is safe access for walking and biking. I think it's just hard to imagine Baker being safer than Baldwin, so maybe you can just explain that one a little bit, the relative rate?
Proximity of Route nine.
Route nine?
Yeah.
Okay.
Getting kids across and around Route nine, if people are actually walking from places where kids might be.
Across Route nine, so I think that's, that was another place where we heard a lot of questions in the Baker community about the site being safe for walking and biking given the traffic. There were just concerns from families in the area. Bussing required, I'm curious if you can just talk about that one a little bit and how you made a determination on bussing required.
Philip, would you like to comment on that? Please. I think the ultimate answer is one that we can't give, because it has to do with the, the way you're going to be, you know, apportioning students across the town to the various sites, but we did make an assessment.
We, we met with the transportation department and of course, we had regular meetings with, with several of the, the groups around, around Brookline. And the sense was that the Baker School would have a higher percentage of people living right in the area, walking or taking their cars to the Baker Site, whereas the Baldwin Site would have fewer the people, fewer people right in the area wanting to drive or to walk, and that therefore there would be a higher percentage of bussing to the Baldwin Site. And then of course, with the Village Site, that that would be substantially more walking as we see in the other schools right in the area.
Yeah, I just, this one is a little bit complicated because it's, I think a number of these other ones are more data-driven and this one feels more like a sense. So I guess I would just wonder if these all need to get zeroed out, simply because it doesn't actually take into account the system-wide effect? Because it could be true that adding, I mean, Baker's essentially four and a half sections now, adding another four-section school there will create a gravitational pull. So yes, there's growth in, in South Brookline, but it may actually create bussing effects elsewhere that we're, it, I just, I don't know, I don't wanna make any assumptions, but this one just feels more like less data-driven than some of the other ones you've given us.
I actually feel very uncomfortable about that criteria because it involves so much more than we were asked to be involved with in terms of the districting and so on. So I would prefer just to remove it from the, from the, from the matrix.
Yeah, or even just leave it in there and instead of having one of them be colored and the other one zeros, just put them all zeros and say the comment is, you know, unable to determine, just that, because I think you did, you did look at it and that's, that's fair.
We did. And we spoke to other people about it, so it wouldn't just be our opinion.
It's just hard, 'cause that one's not data-driven and so many of your other judgments are. Can I ask you a couple of questions about, I mean, storm drainage and proximity to neighbors and a couple of the other ones? I definitely agree with others as well, just because when we think about the, the Conservation Commission, and someone has to remind me, there is a Conservation Commission meeting scheduled, where are, is there gonna be a presentation or a discussion with them?
We're having a preliminary discussion with them tomorrow morning.
Tomorrow morning, okay.
First thing, so we're trying to put this to bed as soon as possible.
Okay, that's great. And then I think there's a, okay.
We're not gonna have a definitive answer for sure, but we'll have a sense of where we're going.
Okay, that's, that's very helpful. And then the last question, just on, on Baker in particular, is you had mentioned the twenty million dollar number for, can you just explain a little bit about how, how you were thinking about that? The note I wrote down is a little bit cryptic even to me, which was what that additional twenty million dollar number is that isn't included in your eighty-five to one hundred?
Yes, so if you look at, for example, Baker D, the pink being the, the footprint of the existing Baker School and the blue being the extent of new construction. At the existing school, the pink footprint, you'll see two bl- blue rectangles. So there's, there's currently modular classrooms at the Baker School that need to be replaced. But not only do they need to be replaced, but also the, the, the core spaces need to be upgraded and increased in size to accommodate the difference between the six hundred student design capacity and the eight hundred student actual capacity. So the twenty million dollars covers those two blue rectangles. And it also covers some site work also to support making this, the, the, the parking and the queuing work.
And so does that mean that this is eighty-five to a hundred and twenty million? Or does that mean that it, that twenty million is incorporated with the, within eighty-five to a hundred?
It does mean eighty-five to a hundred and twenty million if you include right-sizing of the, of the existing Baker School.
Okay, I understand that, great. Okay, those were my big question. Oh, sorry, one other question. So, so the last, you, I, I just wanna make sure that we're reading these columns properly. Have you essentially, when you're making these judgments along these columns?
I wouldn't use the word judgments.
Okay. What, what word? Give me a word. Assessment?
Assessments, yeah.
Okay, assessment. Were you essentially taking the best of each of the options and, or, or were you essentially saying, actually, one of these options could meet all these criteria? Because for example, I can imagine that one of the five for Baker was much better in terms of circulation than a different one?
Yes.
But that one might not be the one that got high scores for something else. So did you basically just take the best of these five and score it? Or is there any one of these that you would say, actually, yes, one of these could get you all these green boxes?
No, that would've been a way to proceed, actually. I could've asked you and staff to select an option, but we didn't see it that way. We, we arrayed the options to demonstrate the capacity of the site and the potential for the site. So no, we're not taking the best of the options, we're, we're evaluating the potential of the site. And, and there are future solutions that we haven't even touched on. We're just trying to push the potential of each site as far as it can go. So it is not, no, we didn't pick one of the options and say, that's the one we're evaluating. Or cherry pick and say, we're taking the best of this one and the best of that one, but we're just looking at the overall potential.
Okay.
Sleckman Deli.
Um, I don't, I don't see on here, did you, the Baldwin Site and the, and the Village Site for that matter, can, can, many of our schools have programs that draw kids from all over town, for instance, if it's a, a cluster of certain language speakers or something like that?
Yes.
And those two sites you can get to from public transportation. There's, Baldwin is probably walkable from the D-line and it's, there's a bus on Route nine.
Yeah.
And the Village Site obviously has a number of public transportation options. And I think that the Baker Site really doesn't have, have public transportation options.
Philip, where did we have public transportation for Baldwin? 'Cause I remember, we talked about the D-line being able to serve it.
We have that under the sustainability piece, where the Village has the best proximity to public transportation.
Oh, I see, okay. But you didn't, um-
We had accen- now, just to repeat for those who couldn't hear, we had access to public transportation under the umbrella of sustainability.
But you didn't disadvantage Baker on, on that criteria, which it's, it's, it isn't accessible by public transportation as far as I know. So why are they not getting a-
A once-in-hour bus?
Why isn't Baker getting a pink or a red on that?
Well, here we are and we're gonna make this a better matrix because of your input. So I think we need to add a site specifically for public transportation.
Right.
Baker wasn't disadvantaged because Baker has other advantages in terms of sustainability, like daylight harvesting and the ability to site geothermal wells there. There might even be discussion of a net zero possibility for one of these schools. That's something that we could probably achieve easily at the Baker and not so easily at, at the other sites.
Ms. Charlofsky?
Yeah, I'm also curious why the pink on-
Can you speak into the mic?
Oh, sure, I'm sorry. I'm curious about why the pink on the Baldwin School for the construction duration. You would have the site, why is it any different than Baker? Actually, I would think it'd be better than Baker, 'cause you have to deal with the kids on the site.
Uh, that was strictly related to the phasing of demolition. So if, if you have to demolish a building, that would affect the construction duration.
The little building?
Yes. I got your point, yeah, that's not a lot of, not a lot of demolition.
Not a lot of damage?
That's the, that's, that's, that's the answer. And Philip is an expert in hazardous materials, 'cause we've been bitten by that bug a number of times.
As the old, that building, there's no hazardous materials there.
Well, we, I don't know.
No asbestos, right?
That's possible. That's the reason, maybe we should, maybe we should adjust that.
It's just, it just didn't make sense to me that.
Any other questions, comments on Baker? I see none, we'll move on to Baldwin. Dr. Jackson?
I wondered if on the Baldwin examples, you could just point out this issue of like vehicle use and access and queuing? 'Cause I was trying to understand in the graphic displays, sort of, you know, there's the front of the, potentially the front of the building where you enter, but then I'm assuming that the parking lot that is at Sewell, where you currently have access from Heath, would be used as part of this, but I can't figure out where that is? Did that go away?
Uh, it's there in the upper left, it's, it's actually more explicit in this graphic. There you can see it. Those are the, that's the two hundred space parking lot.
So, so that red diamond in the left-hand corner by the blue, is that speaking to sort of how folks, the buses or transportation would be coming through from there? Is that what it is?
No. So, uh-
There's a road that runs all the way through Sewell. We just don't use it as a road, but there's a road.
Yes. So I, I have to be careful in treading on this subject because it's a delicate subject involving, we, the school department does not own the Sewell, so it, we, we'll have a partner there in the Recreation Department. And what, what we've learned through this process is there's a lot of enthusiasm for the idea of joining a school to the Sewell Recreation Complex. It would be mutually advantageous. But one of the things that we have to grapple with is that the Recreation Department, you know, they have jurisdiction over certain uses of their property, but some are, have, have other restrictions. And so what we were able to learn from that, and I can't give you all the detail, and please, staff, if you're here, please correct me as I'm going through this, but one of the things that we learned is that there was a very clear ability to cooperate on establishing a jointly-used parking area. And what I'm showing here is two hundred spaces. It, also a very clear willingness to share the playfields themselves for the use of K through eight, which is fabulous for, for that K through eight school. But one of the, the areas that's more delicate is the idea of having dedicated school traffic circulation on the recreation property. So that is not included, that is not, sorry? Yeah, I don't wanna get into the legalistic aspect. We can follow up with you later on some of the wise and wherefore. I just wanna emphasize the degree of cooperation that we got in discussing this and also the enthusiasm. But one of the things that we had to grapple with was keeping, I'm pointing to the circulation, vehicular circulation, keeping the vehicular circulation actually on the Sewell Site. So what, what, I'm sorry, not Sewell Site, but on the Baker, on the Baldwin Site. So I was getting late. So here's Heath Street. We would anticipate that a mu- much of the act, the, the constituency for the new school would come from South Brookline and be coming up along Woodland or Heath and then would be entering the site at Heath. And then this would be the parent drop-off sequence, you'd enter into this curb cut. The developed length here is about, I think I said, six hundred lineal feet. Thatting also includes this loop that we're also able to get on and we're, we're trying to make sure that the kids are lighting on the passenger side of the, of the, of the automobiles. So that's a further restriction. So here's the six hundred feet from the curb cut and then to some distance, which I selected arbitrarily down the exit path, where the kids could, you know, reasonably be expected to, to be walking back to the main entrance of the school. And then the bus drop, the bus queuing is, is right, is in a extension, a widening of Heath Street, uh, 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 along the frontage of the property. So that, that's how the circulation works. And here's the, the same thing for the, the demolished Baldwin School version. Does that answer your question?
Thank you.
Yep.
Any other Baldwin questions from the joint boards?
So, oh, so is this Oak Street? Yes, but this, we don't need to use Oak Street, we can keep that, that circulation on. We explored an option where we would be using Oak Street, but I think the likelihood is that it would be actually fully on the school property, any vehicular movements would be fully on the school property.
Where's Oak Street?
Oak Street is this, let me, this- This, this street here, it has several houses right on it.
Right. That's not a public way?
Thank you for-
Ms. Stran-
Thank you.
I just wanna confirm and clarify that for the Article ninety-seven challenge for the Baldwin Site, that that is limited to the shared parking and to no other aspect of the site. that that is limited to the shared parking and to no other aspect of the site.
The shared parking seems to be fine. It's limited to the aspect of the circulation, veh- vehicle circulation that's, is solely for the, for the, for the benefit of the school.
Any other Baldwin? And let's move on to the Village School. Questions from the board? Ms. Stram.
So, related to the, the, the traffic questions and, and queuing in the Village School, can you clarify whether or not the queuing would be shared with the, the grocery store? Or is it separate? And is there some other aspect of, of those schematics that include traffic for the grocery store and, and trucks, et cetera?
Okay, well, we're into technical territory, Philip, and I'm gonna need to share those other drawings if we don't. So actually, the, the drawings that you're seeing, that I've shown in today's presentation are the drawings that help people understand. But behind those drawings, we've also made more technical drawings. Again, limited, limited by the amount of time that we've had to work on these, on these various alternatives. And I'm gonna now show you the different layouts of parking and, and, and drive access for several different schemes. So the answer is both. So for Village B1, which you see here, this is a, a line drawing. And I apologize to those of you who aren't comfortable reading line drawings. But here you can see that the circulation entering from Aspen Wall Ave onto the site is entirely separate from the circulation for the Stop and Shop, which is in the basement of that building. So access to the Stop and Shop would be from a curb cut at the west end of the site. It would be just for the trucks and for the, the, the parking for that store. Access to the school would be from Aspen Wall. And there would be surface parking in this particular iteration that would be just for the, just for the school. In another iteration, and let me sort of get to that. Whoops, too far. In another iteration, here's one, Village A2. The, the circulation of the school and the, and the, whoops, stop that. The circulation pattern for the school and for the store are shared. So, I didn't do that. So, um, here's the single curb cut, which is the entrance for the school queuing. This would involve a scheduling of, 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 of shipments for the store, which actually happens quite easily and nicely, for example, for the Trader Joe's down the street. So there would be more integration of the school operations and the store operations in this one. And then the, the, the school traffic actually enters into the shared, again, it's doing that. The shared parking garage, which is, in this case, is a two-level parking garage. And then it, whoops. And then it exits out into the school property. So there is some co-mingling of traffic there. The nice thing about it is that, you know, the, the major queuing drop-off would happen mostly before store hours and then during a light period during the afternoon.
Is, um, is the Aspen Wall access essential to the Village site?
No, it isn't. Let me see if I can get through all of this. So here's another scheme that shows if we Village, no, it's not that one. So thi- this is the scheme that I was just referring to, where there is a shared circuit. It's essential if you're gonna totally separate the school and the, and the store traffic, yes. But it is not essential to make the project fly.
But this takes the, this takes the, um, this one takes the scrub it up and the gas station.
It does, yes. We need that in this scheme, yes.
Another question related to the site. You mentioned earlier that the Village site had the lowage square footage per student. And I'm curious if in these schematics, you maximize the potential for rooftop space? Or was this purely what you could accomplish via place on the ground?
No, there's almost no room for place space on the ground. So this is, you can see it here in the Village A1 scheme. There's a new artificial turf roof on the roof of this, of the store. And that's really where a lot of the cooperation between the two projects would have to occur and making that, that occupiable roof possible.
Selectman Heller and then Mr. Glover.
I have two questions. One about the, um, the rooftop playground. And what, to what extent does that affect sustainability in terms of solar? And, I mean, you can't have a playground and a solar panels in the same place.
Photovoltaic panels, no, you would not have them. It, it would, it would obviate the placement of photovoltaic panels. But solar can mean more than one thing. Solar also means daylight harvesting for classrooms. So as you can see, this, the north arrow is in the lower right corner there. This, this bar of classrooms is ideally oriented to the south and no- north for, for that purpose. So, you know, one of the things that we're finding with our schools is that we're not getting a lot of traction with adding photovoltaics to roofs, although I hope for this one, we, we would be able to.
Uh, the second, second question is, um, down here on, um, on R, R dot six, you have wetland concerns. And I'm not sure why Baker is pink and not red, but I'll just move on from that. But I'm concerned about the Stop and Shop site because I know that there are many underground streams or whatever you want to call them in North Brookline that have created flooding problems in Placid One, for instance, and around Cottage Farm. And I'm wondering whether you know of any of those? Or did this, did this analysis or assessment not take into account whether there could be the possibility of those on the Stop and Shop site?
Uh, yes, I think it did. You know, we asked our, um, we asked our, without actually doing borings, we, we asked our civil engineer to do some pretty thorough research into each of these sites in terms of, and, and also our geotechnical. So we have a pretty good idea of what these sites hold in terms of excavation for foundation and so on. And we're not aware of any streams. That didn't come up. One of the issues that did come up is that there is a utility easement along the north a utility easement along the north edge of that site. It's actually a sliver, it's not even an easement, it's actually a sliver of land that we, we've determined, you know, has a major electrical conduit in it. But that didn't seem to be insurmountable or affect, you know, the kind of design possibilities that were on the site.
Thank you.
Mr. Glover?
Sure. I'm reluctant to ask my question because I feel like I should know the answer and I don't. And it's, this question's actually a question for all of us or anybody, actually, among us. The three properties adjacent, along Harvard Street, adjacent to the gas station. So, those three buildings are- What are those? Are there any residences in those buildings?
No, there's a piano store, professional offices, and the women's clinic.
And Walgreens.
And then Walgreens is further up.
That's Walgreens, at the, at the corner.
Okay, I guess it, this is out of total, not from an architectural perspective, but I, I just wonder if there's any utility in that, that particular property when thinking about this site as a whole, whether or not, if you considered those properties, whether you could think differently about what you're doing with respect to Stop and Shop or what you could do with respect to, to how you consider this site entirely, the configuration. And I, I, I think we've given an assignment to, to be restricted to this particular footprint. And I don't know whether it's worth considering revisiting that.
We did look at that. No, we were given an assignment and it didn't include looking at that property, although we did notice in some historical documents that somebody had circled that property at one point. So we gave some thought to whether we should recommend it. Didn't really add anything in terms of the, the capacity of the site for, for, as I said earlier, we have lots of room for queuing space. We have lots of room with the additional scrub it up and gas station. We have lots of room, not only for the existing 800 student need, but also for future expand, potential expansion. What we don't really have room for is, is field space. And that, that's not really adequate in size to, you know, to add a lot of field space. I mean, it is possible you could just take that and use it for field space.
Selectman Franco?
So, uh, I'm gonna ask a question that perhaps I should know the answer to, but I'm gonna hide behind the fact that this is my first meeting on this in several months. So I feel liberated to, to ask a stupid question. I noticed that on this, this comparative matrix, the schedule and cost risk factors category is much more red for the Village site than it is for the, the other sites. I heard you mention a second ago that you have not done borings on the, the Stop and Shop site. I'm wondering if there's additional information that may be discovered over the next, let's say, six weeks to change some of these coatings or, or analyses in light of new information that comes to, comes to, to your attention or our attention.
Yeah, so we think that the borings are appropriate to pay for in the next phase, the feasibility phase. Our civil engineers and geotechnical folks are pretty savvy. They know this area. They, they've done other borings nearby. So, you know, we have information from them based on their overall experience that gives us a fair degree of certainty that we're gonna encounter ledge. And beyond that, we don't really need to know much more.
So, just a follow-up question. I, I noticed that, again, a differentiating factor here is under R, R four, hazardous material sort of soil remediation. This is the only of, one of the three sites that has a, a double negative, a red. I'm wondering if there's the potential, if we select that site and start construction, start building a foundation, we're going to find something nasty in, in one of the other sites? Or not find something nasty in the Stop and Shop site?
That's why it's red. There's a gas station and the, the Stop and Shop is adaptive reuse from a factory.
Wait, but I asked the, the inverse. I said, you know, we're going off of our assumption right now. What's the likelihood that our assumption is incorrect?
Is incorrect.
If we haven't done the borings, we're sort of guessing based on historical uses and what we think might be there.
Yes. You mean, the borings to determine that, that there are hazardous materials?
What I'm getting to is-
In the soil, yeah.
What I'm getting to is one could logically say, well, this is the only site that's got the potential for soil, nasty soil to be there, and we're gonna have to remediate it. Let's try and save ourselves the trouble and we'll go with one of the other two sites. I'm trying to figure out how, what's the, the likelihood that we might be incorrect, mistaken, that there's nasty soil there.
I think if that were the only criteria, we would certainly want to do the soil bor- soil borings now. But it isn't. It's one of many that are equally relevant, many of them are equally important to that one. So, you know, we sort of have to pick our battles in terms of what, where we're gonna, where we're going to spend resources at this point in the process. If you'd like to do this soil borings, I think we, we can do that. But I don't think it will yield very much. They would have to be in the middle of the Stop and Shop. It's on somebody else's property.
Right, we don't own it.
Yeah, right. Village site, questions? I'll, I'll, I'll note that the costs for the Village site are gross costs and doesn't include, should we select it, any partnership or offsets from the supermarket? Is that, that, that's correct?
That is, yes.
Okay. Anything?
Yeah.
Sorry, I'm going back to Baldwin and I just noticed this. Why is Baldwin sort of a pink for deed restrictions?
Philip is, is reminding me that it has to do with the collaboration together with the Sewell property. And still, there are still conversations that have, have to happen. We don't have a determination from Sewell that they, that they are going to offer their playfields for K through eight use. We don't have a determination from them that they're going to, that, that we will be able to build that parking lot. So there are further, there's further work, legal work to do in order to make that site viable because we certainly can't accommodate playfields or parking on the, the site that we actually control.
Dr. Jackson?
Just to clarify, um, does the town not own that property? And are we talking about deeds? Are we talking about cooperation when you say what has to happen next? I'm just trying to understand the work that would have to be done if it's really a legal issue or-
I'm a little out of my depth here, but, and there are others who are more expert in it. But it, yes, it is a legal issue because the Sewell has deed restrictions. Actually, it's not just one. There's more, more than one deed restriction, even though, even though it's on the town.
Article 97 is when you, you, it's a, it's a state program and it's when we, the town, opted to protect parkland. And once you've done that, it's very hard to get that, out of that restriction for some other use. So you have to fit within the context of what is allowed for Article 97. And what they're saying is that of, of parking, parking spaces that also benefited the park use would be acceptable. But just putting your school use over onto what is Article 97 use would not, we would have to actually go back to the state legislature in order to get permission to take some of the land out of Article 97.
That land is already apart from the lot. There is a park, I was just there yesterday, there's a park.
Right, no, what I'm saying is, if you were trying to build the footprint of your school and go over onto the-
Well, they're not.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
So, so just to clarify the point. The larger point is that control of town-owned land is not in the hands of a board. It is in the hands of a board, it's in the hands of the Board of Selectmen. It's not in the hands of a department.
Um, for parkland-
No, no, I'm not, absent, Article 97 is a, is a different thing, I understand that. But if we're talking about relative uses for town-owned property, the decision about that use is the Board of Selectmen's, is it not?
And town meeting and, it would depend, it's a big depends and we'd have to really analyze it.
Some of that site is, is under your control. Some of that site is school.
Right.
Right, so I, I, I don't know, we're not gonna answer that today. But it's, it's, it's something we definitely have to consider. We're going to have to enter into a partnership with the Park and Rec Commission because, you know, they, they have purview over Article 97 land. And, 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 and there, there too, we would have to, our, school use of it would have to work within the Article 97 framework, hence the proposal for a field change.
And I do want to clarify that red doesn't mean no. It just means that there's an area of difficulty.
Right. And it's light red, so it's-
Just one other thing while we're looking at the different criteria. And provide, I just want to come back to the point about provides future expansion potential. I, I for sure appreciate the guidance we gave you, which is that we will need theoretically, four, even four sections might not be enough. My sense, though, on any of these three sites is that if another section were needed, we wouldn't put it here, on any of these three. We'd put it somewhere else because essentially, any one of these is creating a lot of capacity in one part of town. And because we need, because the growth is actually in North Brookline and in South Brookline. It's condo conversions, it's T zones, it's 40Bs, there are lots of things that are driving growth. And it's in both North and South Brookline. I, any of these, because it's one of the locations, if we needed to add something, we would probably add it in the other part of town. So I, I just, this one, I, we probably misled you and it might be worth just to- So, I just, this one, we probably misled you and it might be worth just, that one might be worth taking off entirely because we just wouldn't put it there, I think. It's just hard for me to see that.
Selectman Heller?
No.
Oh, no, okay. Any other comments or questions on any of the three sites? Are we ready to move on to next steps?
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Been very helpful and informative to hear your comments.
This is terrific. Thank you so much, Jonathan.
Thank you.
Okay, so, the next steps are, first of all, thank you all for sitting through a very long meeting. I think we've got a tremendous amount of information. And the great part about the public process is that this is just starting. So, people were saying, well, over the summer, didn't you guys really secretly pick? And you're just gonna tell us? And the answer is no. We're not allowed to do that. And so, what we need to do for both our values and open meeting law is go through a process of, with the rest of the community. This is sort of the first look at this deck. But there really are a number of different pieces. Not only official boards and commissions, but also places where we really are looking for public engagement and improvement. I mean, we took our set of questions through the matrix. We assume all of you will have thoughts on this matrix and questions and modifications. And that's really what the next six weeks is about. My only prefatory comment is that for some people, six weeks feels incredibly fast. How on earth could you make a decision that fast? For other people, this is like season seven of the mini-series and you're just like, really? We have to wait six more weeks? Can't we just decide tonight? And so, the answer is no, we're not deciding tonight, but we are deciding in six weeks. We're not actually gonna extend it. So, what's gonna happen over the next six weeks is probably two, three meetings a week is my guess in terms of different boards and commissions, different, you know, public hearings and opportunities. So, the building commission, and I'm gonna try to do this from memory, but building commission, I know meets next Tuesday. I don't know if this is on their agenda. It's not, okay. But they might have thoughts. Parks and Rec, when is Parks and Rec? Tuesday? Tuesday, okay. Tuesday is Parks and Rec. Is this on their agenda?
Yes.
An update for this is, okay, so there's an update on their agenda. The planning board meeting is? The twenty-first in the morning. Is this on their agenda?
Yes.
Okay, great. We'll put all this on the website with the dates just so people know. Preservation? No, okay. So, Preservation Commission is coming up sometime this month. Conservation Commission, I know there are some informal conversations, but there is another Conservation Commission meeting this month, later on this month. Advisory Committee has some time for Q and A. We're not gonna go through this whole presentation, but a substantial amount of Q and A. And thank you for all the advisory committee members who are here. That'll be starting Tuesday night at-
Subcommittee.
Subcommittee, okay, seven thirty?
Seven is for the Subcommittee.
Seven is for the Subcommittee, okay. So, Tuesday night is advisory and then there are a variety of other places.
Are we gonna cover the open house?
Yes. Is there another slide on the open houses? There was.
That's the important stuff.
Okay, so on your outside, I might have put this up.
The next, okay, the first open house is on September fourteenth, eight to nine thirty at the Baker School Cafeteria. Eight AM.
Eight AM. And for each of these, we would hope that town meeting members and, you know, and other residents nearby would come. So, we'll talk about specific communications there, but that's the fourteenth at eight AM, Baker School.
And then after the next-
Oh, sorry, open house. Let's just describe what that is. Open house is talk, mingle, ask questions, get answers, raise concerns. It's not a presentation. It's, presentation copies will be available, but it really is an opportunity to engage in dialogue or questions or feedback.
There's sheets available outside which have, yeah, the full list of all upcoming meetings, dates, times, what type means they're-
And then the, after the first open house, the next opportunity is a public hearing in this room on September twenty-second, starting at seven PM. And that will be a formal public hearing. My suggestion, you know, we'll be taking public comment and you can say whatever you wanna say. But I think the most useful information for us would be to focus on the evaluation matrix and tell us where you agree, where you disagree, where it missed the mark, where it hit the mark. Those are the kinds of comments that I think will be the most helpful to us. And they also provide kind of a nice structure to help us all think about this. And this, I think, is going to be the key document for the boards to help us make a decision. And as we said at the beginning, this was Mr. Levy's firm's first shot at this. And this is the consultant's shot. And now, it's up to the boards and the public to validate that these judgments are correct.
Assessments.
Assessments, I'm sorry.
Also, a public hearing, just for people who are not familiar, that's not an interactive session. That is, you get three minutes, you get to say whatever you wanna say for three minutes and then we cut you off. And then the next person talks for three minutes. It's not a dialogue or Q and A. Some people aren't used to that format. The two open houses are dialogue, Q and A, informal, unstructured. So, they're just different formats.
Then the next event is an open house next door at the Pierce School Cafeteria on September twenty-eighth, six thirty PM to eight PM. That's an open house. And the next scheduled meeting after that to discuss this is the decision meeting, which is October thirteenth at eight PM. And we're hoping to have it at Brookline High School Auditorium.
The only other thing that I will say is that the school committee, we're a half an hour behind. We still have another two and a half hours on our agenda tonight, you'll be happy to know. There is a note called public comment on our agenda. That's not about this. That's, you could say whatever you want, but the selectmen aren't gonna be there and it's not gonna be a ninth school public comment. The only last thing I'll say is just a tremendous thank you to all of the staff. There has been so much work that's gone into this, from Cara Bruton in planning and Allison to people in all the different departments that were listed. Ben Lummis in the school department spent a tremendous amount of time coordinating all this. Mary Ellen, there are so many people who spent a tremendous amount of time on this, making this possible. So, thank you to all of you. And we're looking forward to hearing from folks over the next number of weeks.
Okay, I think that concludes our meeting. Thank you.
Yeah.
What's your solution?
Not good, you know, so.
Yeah, it's good for that. Good to see you. So, Nancy, what do you think?
And-
She's talking to somebody. Like, she wasn't a good book or anything like that. And I'm just saying, uh, no, thanks because she would've been made, created more work for us.
My mother was not a good woman. She was a professor in, you know, research.
Yeah, I know that.
We were on, just so you know, we were on the six oh five portion of the agenda, number two C. General report, Mr. Bott, any questions, clarifications, comments for the superintendent on his report?
Amazing.
Amazing. Excellent. The amazing one. The amazing one. Okay, so I will briefly do, seeing the lateness of the hour, I will briefly do the report on the workshop. I mean, so typically in the summer workshop, what we do is we do a review of the year we just had and then we do a preview of the year to come and then any big issues that we're thinking about. In this year, and that typically involves the superintendent's evaluation and the setting of superintendent and senior staff goals for the coming year. Given that Mr. Bott had started seven days prior to our summer workshop, we spend most of our time thinking through the relatively longer list of priorities that were on our agenda. A number of them are detailed in the notes. But, you know, for, sort of the general categories we talked about were leadership and administration, sort of curriculum and strategic plan, capital, finance, and policy, which sort of map to our areas. So, under leadership, there were a number of different pieces that we talked about. One was successful onboarding of our new superintendent. Successful onboarding of our two new deputy superintendents for teaching and learning and student services. Successful onboarding of our two new principals at the Pierce School and the Lawrence School. Six, a process to address the fact that we have three interims at the Heath School, the Runkel School, and the headmaster for the high school. So, where searches are appropriate and that sort of thing, that that would be an important piece. There was a substantial, so that was sort of the educational leadership piece. There were also a number of pieces around this professional climate and culture, which was a priority for us at a values level, not at an implementation level because that's not, we don't set professional culture. But that was something that the superintendent was quite keen to do and had been quite keen to do, leading up to when he became superintendent officially. And then the last area was negotiations, successful, you know, conclusion of our contracts. So, that was the sort of leadership and administrative piece and culture piece. The curriculum and strategy piece, there were a few pieces there. One was the sort of next iteration of our strategic plan. People have been pretty happy with the four goals. They feel pretty durable. But there was some discussion about picking that process back up and making sure that we had initiatives tied to the goals and then investments tied to those initiatives. Basically, mapping what we had, where were the gaps, where were the overlaps? If there were places where best practices needed to be considered further, that be part of it. And that everyone sort of understood their role within the strategic plan, from the classroom teacher all the way through administrators through to us as we were sort of putting together budget priorities. So, it was the strategic plan side. And then for the curriculum side, there was sort of a longish list of things that people were interested in. Our two perennial topics are the middle school years and maximizing those and math. So, it sort of came up to the top of the list. Structurally, the question of what was program review two point O going to look like? Not that we were going to decide it in the first couple of months and start it, but that that sort of holistic view of the classroom from, you know, the building level to the curricular level and how all those things fit together was something that we were quite interested in. And obviously, the superintendent's already made progress on that one and is a priority for him. um, was something that we were quite interested in, and obviously the superintendent's already made progress on that one and, and is a priority for him. And, and then the last one was, uh, the Brookline High School Education Plan. Um, we talked a little bit about the ninth school education plan, but understood primarily that that was going to be very similar to the education plans we have. Um, so it was going to be the high school education plan that, um, the curriculum would have to see, um, at some point as we enter, um, the feasibility phase. Um, the, the last area was, um, around sort of race and equity and continuing our work, um, in identifying areas where we needed to put, sort of again tied to the strategic plan, but identifying areas where we needed to put additional resources. Um, and again, a lot of activities already happened, we heard a lot about it, and from six to seven P M. this evening. Um, but just from a kind of a knitting together point of view and making sure our budget and our priorities from, and policies from our perspective, um, fit into that, uh, was very important. Uh, there were a number of one-off items, um, that people were interested in, in terms of curriculum, but I think those were the, the ones that the most number of people seemed to be interested in. And for policy, there was sort of a long list of policies that, in some attempt to just kick that right back to policy, to say, hey, you all need to let us know, um, what your list is, once we have a new W. superintendent for student services in place and the, the policy committee, we kind of punted on that one and said, you will come up. But though, there were at least a list of three or four that were pressing and, and others that may come up. Um, there was a discussion about the policy manual, um, and the policy manual decision was, I think, to at least not necessarily tackle the entire thing this year, uh, but to maybe make that a year two priority. Stop snickering, Mr. Glover. Um, but, but to identify if there were particular areas, um, and take recommendations from staff on things that would be, um, highest priority, uh, for, for fixing, um, liability or risk. Um, for capital, um, our capital cup overfloweth, um, Mr. Pollack, uh, we have the devotion project, which I always have to remember to put first, because everyone just skips past it. Um, we actually have a giant hundred and twenty million dollar devotion project going on for the next two years. Um, so it is in good hands, but we have, you know, kids in swing spaces and all sorts of things. So delighted that that's come up, uh, gone so well for the first couple of, um, weeks, uh, but obviously continued attention there. The ninth school process, which we just did, and there's a whole timeline associated with that. Um, and there's a high school process, which I'm not going to talk about right now, but maybe after your capital meet, presumably there'll be a topic next Tuesday and some, I don't know, you could do it now or after your capital meeting, but there's a substantial updates just on the timeline of those processes. Um, uh, so between devotion, the ninth school, the high school, um, and just our, our C I P, sort of to get us to our end state. Meaning what kinds of classrooms will we have to build or adjustments will we have to make over the next five years and making sure there's C I P money to go along with it. Um, and then in terms of finance, um, you know, finance has a, a few policies, obviously, that you want to work on. Actually, there are a couple of capital policies also, like rentals and other things that, um, Deputy Superintendent Don is interested in. Um, for finance, it was primarily, uh, the, our ongoing, um, maintenance of effort, uh, which is to redo the budget book in a completely, um, transparent and explicable way for the public. Um, and Ms. Don has made a tremendous amount of progress on that, but there are obviously her ambitions, um, her eyes were, are, are hopefully not bigger than her stomach, but her eyes are big in terms of the kinds of, um, um, you know, and ambitions that she has for, for our budget book and, and her aspirations are, are, uh, they're sky high. Um, and obviously the most important thing above maintenance of effort and cleanup, um, in terms of, you know, some, some fees, policies and whatnot, quite important ones, but, but things that we need to fix, um, are the five-year budget projections, uh, because as I will continue to remind, remind people, we are in, starting year two of a, uh, three-year override budget. Um, and there's a good chance that after this coming year, we will start to, uh, project deficits. We said two years ago, we would project deficits two years from now, and, um, by golly, we might. Um, and so making sure that we're as clear as possible and giving everyone in town, advisory committee and others, um, that line of sight with us is, is pretty important. Um, and to the extent that there are deficits, figuring out, um, ways and timings, um, of operating overrides relative to ninth school and high school overrides. So that's what I remember off the top of my head. Um, other people might have other things, and I think the notion was that, stop snickering, Dr. Jackson. Um, the notion was that, uh, the superintendent and senior staff were going to go away and, um, think about that list and many of the other things on their list, um, that they're interested in, um, and come back to us with system goals, um, and you can give us just a sense of your timing on that. Uh, sort of system goals, um, superintendent needs a set of goals, senior staff members need a set of goals, um, that all kind of align. And to the extent that that list is too long, um, we need to sort of prioritize it and agree that we're, um, going to take things off the list. So that's my report from the workshop. I'm sure I missed other things, because there were other things that happened. We, um, released executive session minutes, which was incredibly exciting. Um, there were votes about devotion school proprietary items, and there was a extended discussion about solar panels on the roof at the Runkel School. Um, there were some policies that we had first readings on, which, um, which we'll talk about a little bit more. We talked about schedules. Mr. Bott provided some information on his entry plan, and we ate dinner. Anything else that anyone would like to add? Okay. Oh, Mr. Pollack.
It's not really about the workshop. Uh, I will very, very briefly take up your, um, your question about the, you know, did I have any reflections on capital?
Well, you have an update if you want it.
Well, no, I'll do it now, because I don't, I don't, I don't, I wasn't really planning on making an update.
Okay.
But I, I just had a, a thought, which is that, um, w- obviously, it's, it's this multi-year busy season. And what I, what I think we need to, uh, what, to, to really pay attention to and what staff needs to think about is, um, that, uh, the, the, the ninth school is going to, tr- once we have a site, it'll transition to a more, in, into a little bit more regular process. A building committee will be formed, and there'll be, uh, a, a lot of public input and, um, and, and it'll sort of march forward, um, and it'll take a, a lot of attention, it'll take a lot of staff attention to, to do that. A little more under control in terms of the public and public communication and stuff, I think, a little more regularized. We're just going to be beginning the same process with the high school, which in many ways is much more complex. It's not necessarily more meetings, but it's a bigger community, uh, outreach and stuff, and, and then that's going to be added on top of everything else and going to require thought and attention and communication. And, um, I think we'll be able to handle it all, but it's going to really, uh, challenge staff, just in terms of resources, to be able to manage all of it and run a continually growing school system. And in parallel, it's going to, as we know, and as, as, um, Dan Bennett, the building commissioner, wrote in a memo back in March, um, he doesn't have the resources to manage all these projects at once either, and, and they're aware of it, and it becomes a Melissa Goff budget question. But it's, you know, that, y- you can bring on the staff, but there's also just psychic bandwidth. It's a lot. That's, that's, that's my comment.
Well said. Anything else? All right, seeing nothing, we are going to move on to public comment. Um, and seeing the vast number of people in the audience, Mr. Amory, would you like to make public comment? You have three minutes, yes, please do come up to the microphone, though, um, and give us your name. Um, you have three minutes. Uh, our policy is not to comment on public comment, uh, but we're happy to hear you. It needs to be green, because thousands of people may be watching you at home or on video.
Thousands of people may be watching from home.
In H D. now, which is terrifying.
In H D., wow. Uh, so, uh, my name is Matt Amory. I am a Brookline parent, uh, of two of my own children and, uh, two of my, uh, girlfriend's children. Um, I'm, uh, I'm a librarian in the town of Wayland. I'm a member of the A F T., uh, and I would ask that the school committee, uh, consider joining with many other municipalities and many other school committees in going on the record, uh, as being in opposition to question two, expanding the, uh, expanding the number of charter schools in the state. Um, I have some, uh, I have some model language, which, um, I'd be glad to read if you think it's, if, if you'd like to hear it. And I will go ahead and do so, since there's no comment, since there's no comment.
You have two more minutes.
All right, four minutes. So. Apologies here. So many, so, and as I said, so as you, as you folks are probably well aware, many municipalities and many, uh, school committees have come out already in op- have come out already, have gone on the record already as being opposed to adding more charter schools in the state. Um, and I don't have the language here, but I would just sug- and I'm not sure if I have, I'm not sure if as a member of the public, I have a right to introduce, uh, new business here, probably not. But I would ask, uh, that you folks consider, uh, the impact of raising the number of charter schools in the state, not only on, uh, rich communities like Brookline with well-funded and popular school systems, which are under less pressure than, uh, other school systems in the state, where there is an awful lot of, uh, privatization, charterization, uh, pressure on school budgets. So, um, I don't have the language, but I'm sure that you can find the language, uh, wherever you choose to, and I will, uh, sign off. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Uh, seeing no one else here for a public comment, um, we appreciate your coming. Um, we're going to move on to our next piece of the agenda, which are subcommittee reports, and I'm sorry that we are forty minutes behind, uh, but, uh, finance, Ms. Ram.
Thank you. So finance kicked off the school committee season yesterday morning, having the, the first meeting of the year. And we convened to, um, have a first discussion of our budget development guidelines and priorities, as well as the budget development calendar, which, uh, we also invite the school committee tonight to have a, a first discussion on those documents. Um, and I just, before having, uh, discussion and, and review of them, I just wanted to provide some higher level context of what we're trying to accomplish. Uh, the first, which Mr. Ditkauf had already has mentioned, is, is that the, uh, this year is the second year of, uh, of a three-year override. The budget that we will be developing for next year is the third year of a three-year override. And, and as such, the, the priorities that we, that are outlined in the override are, are still relatively consistent. So you'll notice that, that much of the, the guidelines has not changed relative to last year. Um, also relevant are the multi-year projections, and one of the things that we do want to make sure that we're thinking about in the upcoming year's budget is ensuring that we're giving as much consideration to the intersections of the operating and the capital budgets. As enrollment growth is incurring, that, that, that they are quite, um, related to one another, and we need to make sure that we're thinking as, as we, um, expand buildings, as we consider a ninth school, that, that we're considering fully the oper- the impact on the operating budget. Um, as, as far as process is concerned, that the other thing that is important to keep in mind is, is that last year we piloted a process to try to complete our budget earlier in the year. Uh, we, we identified many of the, the challenges and hurdles to that, such that this year, we, we will actually plan to land the budget by the fifteenth of February, both to ensure that we are in line with town bylaws, but also, very importantly, from a more strategic standpoint for the schools, we can get ahead of hiring for, for, um, teachers in, in our buildings, because as of now, we are behind other communities in doing that. So I think it is a really important goal for us to, to be able to, um, hire folks earlier in the season. And, uh, finally, that the other piece that, that we are going to try to, um, do more of in, in this year is include other departments in, in our planning. We are not, we, the, the, we are, we are one town, and we, we are the school department of the town of Brookline. And as we think about some of the, the decisions that we make, that, that, and, and decisions that the other departments make, that they have impacts on those other budgets. So when we think about coordinating with the I T. department and other departments, this is something that we're going to try to do more deeply this year. So just a few points of, of context as we think about what we're trying to accomplish, both in the calendar and in the guidelines. Um, as far as comments and, and discussion or, or questions, I'd like to start first with the guidelines, because the calendar focuses both on, on capital and operating. With that, I'll open it up to, to questions from folks.
This is just a clarification. Um, number four, right on the first page, talks about planning, uh, adequate contingency funds for uncertainties and fluctuations. I seem to recall, and this may be a question for Mary Ellen, that Mary Ellen was moving away from the use of contingency funds to a different form of budgeting where she would try to plan in advance. Am I, is my memory correct there? And.
Yes, you're.
If that's true, what?
Your memory is, is correct. Uh, the, what we are trying to do is be more explicit about what those contingency funds are for, as opposed to having contingency funds that, that are, are general, being really thoughtful about where and why we may need them. Um, it, but it is not to eliminate them altogether. And Mary Ellen, feel free to, to add to that if, if you feel like there's more characterization that is helpful.
Um, just to remind the committee is that we, um, were intentional about, uh, funds for special education tuition. We were intentional about, um, funds for F T. Es for enrollment growth in special education, where we would need positions that we don't yet know we would need eighteen months ahead of time, um, but we know we are, we are going to need those positions and have those reserved through the salary budget. Um, and also having positions that were unallocated for regular education, um, enrollment growth in terms of kindergarten classrooms or additional classroom sections that we were anticipating, but we weren't quite sure exactly which school that those were going to land in. So we weren't commi- we knew we needed to hire and would need to hire additional staff, but we didn't necessarily know where. Um, and so that's much more intentional than, I believe, some of the line items were sort of broad strokes of, uh, funding. And ru- ultimately, I think at the end of the day, we ended up with probably about the same amount of money, um, but it was very much targeted to specific expenditures and intentional expenditures. That's really the focus.
So just on that point, and then I have something else. We used to also have contingencies for soft money from the state, um, kindergarten, uh, grant, the nurses' grant. We, we'd ha- we have a number of grants that go up and down, and, um, and some disappear, unfortunately. Um, it would seem to me that I would, I know that you're not very comfortable with that, but I think that, that we need to have something in the budget to allow for those, uh, sorts of fluctuations.
Um, the grants you mentioned, those were all allocated out. They weren't actually contingencies, so, um, as, um, the finan- the subcommittee had heard on our meeting yesterday, the kindergarten grant was eliminated. So we're in the process of, um, finding funding. So part of that, what we're using for that is both, um, additional chapter seventy money that is, will be coming through the town school partnership, um, as a reallocation in November, at November town meeting, as well as a reconciliation of the health insurance, um, allocation that we have in a reserve for health insurance for new, new positions above what was budgeted on the town side. We have roughly three hundred and nineteen thousand dollars for new, um, F T. Es, and if that's not needed, then we would allocate that to funding the kindergarten. So we are, so some of it is using the resources that we have, um, that we have identified for a specific purpose, that if they're not needed for that specific purpose, to allocate them for the next perp- for the next need. Um, and, um, as well as we would also be looking at this time of year is where we're at with, um, salary savings and turnover, and that is also a source of, um, funding, which we can't necessarily predict, um, but we know it exists and it occurs. Um, we do. We do fund a reduction in our budget of an amount to fund new positions, but there's always a little bit more than what we estimate. So those funds are, we haven't been able to completely identify those funds because we haven't finished our hiring yet, so we won't know that number until the middle of October.
The other piece that, I know we went over this quite a lot in detail in the Finance Subcommittee, but the part that got it added on in the legislative mandates, I have a problem with that being part of the budget guidelines, unless there's some big costs consumed in them. There's one that's listed twice, just FYI, but other than that, a number of these I know we've done, or, you know, maybe we need to update, but, but most of them have happened. And it seems to me that it just takes over, it makes our budget guidelines look like the state mandates is our budget guidelines.
So I, I added those as reference from the conversation was to change the language, because what was listed was the opioid bill, and there's more than just the opioid bill. So just, so to some extent, it's an illustration of what's in the queue and what has been in the queue that we're still working on and still completing. So I don't have a problem with them, with the references getting, that's why I added them, added, added them at the end of the document-
Right.
-was to sort of respond to that it is more than just the opioid bill, but we should-
I mean, if there's, it, it seems to me, if there is a state mandate that is a, a big cost in our budget, we should definitely highlight it. But it, the other ones that are either maintenance or something that, you know, isn't a cost, I don't understand why it would be in the budget guidelines.
Maybe one way of addressing this, so I, I mean, I do think it's helpful for us to all have the comprehensive list, which I, I very much appreciated about that, Mary Ellen. But perhaps, as, as it pertains to the guidelines, one way of, of dealing with this, and this is not the exact language I would use, but just to, to, to find language that, that describes just that, that there is quite a large number of these things, and it's somewhat death by a thousand cuts. More so than any one of them is, is particularly large. But again, that isn't the language I would choose to use, but just to, to describe that, that, that the list is, is quite significant, and that there are, you know, we could even quantify the number that we are, that are new and the, and the ones that are prior years that we are still working on.
So I guess I, I would propose that in four D on the page, on that page, is basically you delete from C-list attached, you just see, delete from C-list attached to the end, because I wrote the, so it says legislative and DESE regulatory changes. There's an edit that was provided. I don't, I'm assuming you-
Better C.
Better C, sorry, force. Well, DESE regulatory, the system will review and update policy, guidelines and services in accordance with new legislative mandates and DESE regulatory changes, period, end of-
Yeah.
End, and delete the rest.
Yeah.
And then part of the budget document and part of the budget response is to provide you with the laundry list of details and regulatory changes that we're responding to.
To, to Helen's question, do A and B continue, does it continue to be valuable to have the, these explanatory paragraphs for A and B? As opposed to just sort of collapsing the whole thing and really a flag? State mandates as a flag that it, the budget needs to reflect it, but we don't necessarily need to? I mean, in the past, we really did want to talk about the, the burden of implementing educator evaluation, rolling it out, and it's still a high expense because you have to do it so often and retail. Do, do we, you know, is, is it, is it useful to have three inches of, of this document about that? Is the question, I think it's a good question. I don't have an answer.
I think, actually, so I'll go the other way now. I think the three inches are important because it does take a lot of time, and time is money in some ways. So that, I think, is important. I think the, the total list being part of this, I don't know. To me, it just feels like it weighs down the rest of the document and takes away from what it is we're trying to say, for what it's worth. I, I can go either way on it, but that would be my sense.
And I would add to, to your, to your question. I think that these, the, the three, highlighting educator evaluation, retail, because as, as it, as the mandate now fully comes into effect, the, the training window is over, there are implications for us that we have to, we have to address. I think it's important to, to highlight those as, as, they are continuing work for us. I think that they are the most complicated. In some ways, they're sort of the most broad of the, of the list of state mandates. So I, I think that for now, I would say they're important to keep.
Maybe just the other way to ask the question is, are there any of the ones in your footnote two, Mary Ellen, that you feel like are of significant cost impact, that they should be actually included and highlighted more? And you don't have to answer that right now, but just-
Well, yeah, there's a series of them. One is-
Right, because it feels to me, so you don't, we don't have to go through them now, but I think there is some value to expressing to the community that there are new state mandates that are not baked into how we already do business, that are going to create new categories of cost for us to implement. So these are two, educator evaluation and retail are two. I'm sure there are others, but just highlighting those, because then people say, oh, right, they need, they can't just take new growth and put it towards enrollment, they have to deal with state mandates also. So again, not going through every single one, but giving us the most important, or the most, I know, I shouldn't say most important, the, the highest dollar value ones for a budget document.
There is only really one that is, that is new, that is emergency response for schools, that has been a major effort in the state since 2009 and 10, and going forward and a lot of activity in the last three years, where we don't actually have a line item. We actually need to invest in emergency planning and response. So that's actually, out of all the ones I looked at in terms of what would be an expense and then an ongoing expense, that is, that is one that would bubble up for me. The others are really about changing practice and changing how we do things, and don't necessarily add a major expense, add positions, add resources, add, you know, systems.
So those might be things for the budget document to explore-
Yes.
-and not the budget priorities. But the budget priorities, maybe you can just, okay. Would, would that help? Yep, that's helpful.
The other thing you could do, just in pairing it down, is eliminate anything from the budget guidelines list that is subject to appropriation. If it's subject to appropriation and that language is in the legislation, then it's not, we're not required to meet it unless there is actually money coming to us to meet it. So, I mean, if you're looking for ways to, to take something out.
Is that really true?
Yeah. That's why-
I thought there were-
That's why it's really important to get that language into the bill.
So outside of the mandates, are there any other sort of items that are major that are missing or don't belong here? And, and I will say that the subcommittee is reconvening on September nineteenth, and so this is not the last opportunity to, to get your thoughts in. But you, you might also just ask folks if we need to meet again on the nineteenth. And is there anything else on that agenda, or is that whole agenda just to do this document again?
So we can, yeah, we can, we can take that offline, but, yeah.
So I just have one question, which is about, I, which just occurred to me. So, so something that is not here, that we have talked about periodically over the last couple of years, is the commitment, we have commitments to a number of things, and numbers one through six under, you know, maintain the school committee's ongoing commitments too, and then we list things. And I think it's a good list, but something that's not in there that has come up over time has been our commitment to the, I, classroom aides in kindergarten and first grade. And I'm curious about whether or not that rises to the level of something that we make a formal commitment to in a budget document, or whether or not that is something that we leave to the details of how we support special education. But because that was implemented with the specific goal, one of the specific goals, not just to improving the services that we were offering, but also very much a budget, budgetary objective of holding the line on the number of one-to-one aides that we were needing to provide in later years, it just seems to me that we either know or we don't know that that has accomplished that particular goal. I think we saw some presentations in the past that suggested that it had been, that it had contributed to, to at least limiting the, the growth of those. So it's just a, as I said, it, it may be, it's certainly not a conversation we can have right now, but, but it's a, a major part of our budget when we're talking about budgeting, about our staffing. As we grow, it will become more and more important how we staff that and whether or not that is something we want to make a formal commitment to, I think is an important conversation to have.
We actually are, are launching that conversation this fall, led by Vicky Milstein in conjunction with, with Nicole and Leslie Ryan Miller and her team of kindergarten educators.
Great.
And, and actually, a fair amount of planning has started in that process, so that Vicky, in conjunction with central office senior leadership staff and our team district-wide of kindergarten teachers, can, can actually begin to answer that question for us in the development of the budget process.
Okay, that's great. And so there will be a specific recommendation on that?
Yes.
Yes.
On that particular thing, some staff. Thank you very much. That's great.
The only other thing I would add, and this is just based on what you said, we have in the past, the superintendent and really the superintendent's executive assistant have identified classrooms or grade spans where a floating para could be helpful. So for example, there were a couple of years, a number of years back, there was classrooms that were well in above our capacity. They weren't in the one, two years where they got a para automatically, but it was maybe a second or third grade classroom, I don't remember. But there were particular schools where the numbers were high enough that because we were just, we were concerned about the teacher's ability to deal with, like, I think it was like three twenty fours or something like that, in, in the lower grades. So they added in a floating para for that school, for that grade level. It was not a new district-wide policy. It was to address a really specific set of questions and get out ahead of it. And so anyway, I think that's a, you're, you're absolutely right to raise it just as a structural issue for K one, but I also just think that that methodology and finding vulnerability areas, that like, wow, if we don't do something here, there might be a risk of IDP shooting up or just classroom disruption shooting up. They're, they're younger, the, the numbers are bigger than we wanted, let's pay attention to it. So that, that always happened on a regular basis, I feel like a number of times throughout my school committee career. So anyway, that's, it's, I, I just didn't want to forget to say that we saw those kinds of things happen mid-year.
Right, and so my general point for the guidelines is just, do we want to have some kind of a reference to that in the guidelines? That it's a priority to receive a recommendation to, I mean, I don't know. And, and I don't feel strongly about its being there. It's just struck me as a- Yeah, no, no, and that would be fine, and, and I'm mostly cons, just glad to hear that we're going to get a formal recommendation, that that review is happening, because that's been a very important and very large investment that we made. And I think it's important that we stay on top of it.
And I think it would be fascinating if there was any quantitative analysis. It's, it's challenging because you're, effectively, you're in the realm of trying to prove the negative, that adding these aides on a regular basis is reducing one-to-one assignments. And I just don't know if you-
We saw that. We actually did see that. So if you, if you look at our enrollment growth and you look at the growth of one-to-one paras over since 2008, we actually saw data last year that said one-to-one paras were not growing commensurate with enrollment growth. And you can't, again, you, every child is a unique snowflake, but you-
And we also-
And also cor, correlation does not prove causation, so-
Right, no, no.
But-
But at a sort of thirty thousand foot level. So if there aren't further comments on this right now, why don't we move to the calendar? And if, Mary Ellen, if you want to give an overview, and also I will say, if folks pertinent to Susan's comment, to Ms. Dickkopf's comment, if, if folks don't feel like another convening on the guidelines and calendar is necessary, do let me know. I will forever be shocked if we do not have to have more conversation on such things, but I, but that would be outstanding.
Just to thank you for color coding it. It really is helpful. It really, I, now I know when I have to be there, what, what's, you know, what we have to do. But thank you for doing that.
I, I wonder if there is a, a, a name for the advisory capital subcommittee that's like, that would, I mean, you could just do ADV period capital subcommittee or something? Because it, sometimes it's just called capital subcommittee, and then it's distinguished from SC capital subcommittee?
So this advisory capital subcommittee is different than the ones actually referenced here?
Okay, so when it says capital sub, when it says capitals, if it just says capital subcommittee, is that staff? It says on November first, it says review of CIP with the capital subcommittee. I think SC capital subcommittee, that one works for me. That's us. And if you, if you want to call it town capitals-
Yeah, perfect.
So each one has a name that's repeated all the way through. Thank you. So each one has a name that's repeated all the way through. Thank you. If you could just call, one could be Melissa. You could just put Melissa and then you could say Carla.
Okay. Um, so as, as a school committee member who was in her third year and who frankly has like, tough, put my toe in the water with this finance committee and stepped out and stepped back in every time we do a budget, I just wanted to express my gratitude and appreciation for creating both guidelines that make sense to me and that make me believe that when I get the budget, I can actually look at the guidelines and look at the budget and go, do they line up? And a calendar that says, and now this is where we are in the process. So I just want to provide that global feedback as somebody who has tried to figure this thing out and, um, just appreciate the help.
I, I will also just add that, that when Ms. Dickoff made the comment earlier tonight about new staff coming in with a critical eye as to how we do things in Brookline and why we do things the way we do in Brookline, Ms. Dunn immediately came to mind. She has been a, a very constructive, um, person, force in that, in that process. So thank you.
Mr. Zimmerman and Ms. Gittens take note. The, the gauntlet has been thrown down.
Is that a Groundhog Day reference?
I'm looking across the room and I can see you already have several pages of your list started. Yeah, yeah.
So we're only looking at the operating budget column, right? Because the capital budget column's going to get disgusting capital next week? Is that right? Okay. Do you have anything else for us, Ms. Graham?
No, not right now.
So when are you going to make a determination about the nineteenth? How do you want to do that?
If, if folks on the subcommittee could send me any of their, um, remaining questions by, would end of day tomorrow be reasonable? Questions or comments? And then we can make a determin, and then I can make a determination as to whether or not I think this merits discussion or can, can we manage the edits off, offline? Great. Thank you.
Great. Capital, Chapala.
Um, we're meeting on Tuesday from four to six, followed by, uh, I will at least, and probably Helen will be attending the building commission meeting, which is mostly just an update with the architects and contractor for the devotion school project. And then once they're done with the schools, uh, stuff, uh, uh, an invitation has been extended from, um, Michael Sandman and the advisory committee to come update them on the ninth school process. So, um, then we go talk to advisory and tell them about what we're doing with the ninth school and Carla. And did you, did I hear something about somebody, something else happening on the thirteenth also? Con, uh, Parks and Rec? And so...
I'm, um, taking a break from mediation to go to Parks and Rec with Tara Bruton, um, who they are talking about the ninth school, um, as part of their agenda on the thirteenth as well.
Same time?
Same time as advisory. So it's, uh, their meeting starts at six and it's like the third or fourth agenda item. I'm meeting with Erin tomorrow morning, so I'll have more information on sort of timing of that. So I'll let David and David know.
Advisory is talking about bicycle paths and, at seven, and then they're going to get to, um, us at, whenever that is. So maybe that we could visit a little bit with Parks and Rec.
Yeah. So their building commission, Parks and Rec, and advisory are all sort of happening at the same time.
Six, seven. Well, but, but it's an interesting question. So, so advisory, advisory was kind enough to have us at eight so that if we needed to do anything else that night, it would be fine. If Erin would be kind enough to take us at seven, if Buildings is at six, we could go to Erin at seven and go to advisory at eight, you just might get more coverage from people. We could just, I'll go from room to room in town hall. Be very efficient. If she'd be willing.
I'll talk to her tomorrow.
So regardless, who all is around, who all around, right, we do have mediation that night. And so Mary Ellen, the superintendent, you two will all be in negotiations. Helen, David, and I will be in the building wandering from room to room. I don't know who else is around Tuesday night. Barbara? Okay. So some number of us will be, I think, able to cover, between the four of us, we will be able to cover Buildings, advisory, and Parks and Rec.
Oh, I just, I just do have a, a piece of capital update, um, which is on the, which is on the committee of seven, which can, a committee of seven was convened to choose an architect for both projects. Um, it completed its work on the ninth elementary school project and, and ranked JLA Jonathan Levy first, uh, and so, and then ranked, uh, Mount Vernon Group second or whatever. But, uh, Ray Maisick is presumably negotiating the feasibility study, uh, follow-on work with, with Jonathan Levy and that the committee of seven is done. Um, however, for the, um, high school project, uh, three firms were, uh, were ranked or cho, not, not ordered, but were, um, picked. And we're going to actually do a visit to a high school for each of the three. And one has been scheduled. Beth McDonald just scheduled the first yesterday. That's at ten o'clock in the morning at Winthrop High School on the twenty-eighth of September.
If I can add to that, David. And we also determined to interview all three firms. After the, after the visits, and those are open to anybody who would want to come.
Uh, no, it's, it's, you know, um, i- i- if you're interest, if you're conceptually interested in visiting the high schools, let one of us know and we'll get you included in the invite. I mean, it's a walk-in drive to a high school. It's not like there's a limited number of seats. Uh, but it's a big time commitment to drive to Winthrop and spend an hour and a half or whatever. But if you, if anybody's interested, whether they're on capital or not, um, tell us and we'll get you into the email loop on that scheduling.
Okay. Excellent. Curriculum. Ms. Gata.
Curriculum. Well, the first curriculum meeting of the year will be on Thursday, September twenty-ninth at eight-thirty. Uh, normally we will meet on the third Wednesday, but things come up like site visits to schools. So we are, instead, we're meeting on Thursday. Uh, at this first meeting, we will be reviewing the MCAS results for 2015-16. And we will also be looking at the VHS educational plan, the plan that will direct the renovation, um, or addition for the high school. Um, we have put off until October our discussion of what we'd like to accomplish this year because we want to get, we, we want to hear the, the MCAS results. Um, every year we do look at our list to see what we need to do and what is relevant. There are items like the, uh, high school course catalog changes that we always do, the, uh, Massachusetts accountability levels, changes based on, uh, program reviews, all of this stuff. And we will be doing all that this year and mapping, uh, a lot of what we do to the strategic plan as well, or we will evaluate it. I think Ben is doing most of it. Um, but we will look at it, um, and review it. Um, at the October meeting, we're also going to discuss the presentation of the principals', uh, strategic improvement plans, um, because we wonder if the current system works, the, the coming together before the meeting and having them do individual presentations. And we wonder if there's a better way to share this information. And I don't mean to imply that we don't think it works. I think we just want to see if there are any other ideas that people had. Um, we will also be thinking, um, at least this is what I'm hoping we'll be thinking about, what presence, if any, we as a school committee should have in the buildings. Um, and I bring that up because it, I've heard from so many people, why are they, what, what do they know about what we do? We never see them in the buildings. They never come to the schools. So I think that's something we need to discuss at curriculum and think about what we could do that would foster a sense of community where we would be more familiar to the teachers, the parents, et cetera, and they would feel that we really were invested in what they were doing. So it's something you can think about and come to the meeting. Rebecca, you're looking very, uh, quizzical.
Excellent. Any other questions for Ms. Gata? Great. Thank you. Government relations, Ms. Dunn.
There was an election today.
Okay. Uh, policy review, Dr. Jackson. Well, I mean, our... My only other question is, you know, we were asked to take a position on the charter school cap. If anyone is interested in doing that, they should probably talk to Rebecca, who is our government relations person, about engaging in a significant number of more hours as a school committee on this issue.
Ms. Dickoff?
Oh, sorry. Michelle Skye.
That particular issue also will come up in terms of the MAS C resolutions.
So we might not need to.
So we will need to take...
Oh, take it up as part of that.
Take it up as a vote under that.
Or not. Okay. Great.
Oh, yes.
Policy review. Dr. Jackson.
Okay. So the next, uh, the first meeting of the policy subcommittee will take place on September fifteenth, um, at eight AM. We've moved them to eight, uh, to nine-thirty to try and accommodate all of the members. Um, our first topic for discussion, and I'm excited to hear from, um, my new colleagues, Sam and Nicole, and my old colleague Mary Ellen, about anything else that needs to be prioritized. Um, but I have proposed, um, that at least for the fifteenth, we will review and discuss the meal charge policy that's been proposed. We will, uh, review and discuss a hazing policy, which currently doesn't exist, but needs to. Um, and we will get up to speed from Mr. Zimmerman on our opioid use procedures, um, and corresponding policy needs that are required by the state as of late. So, um, and then another topic that we won't take up on the fifteenth, but that will be added to the docket this year that, um, I had not heard of until today, is the homeschooling policy, um, which apparently requires some attention. So those TBD. Um, the other thing I'd like to do is, um, engage in a second reading and hopefully a vote on the proposed, um, public schools of Brookline financial assistance policy. Hopefully everybody remembers, um, back in July, we did a first reading of this policy. Um, and, um, we had discussed it prior to that as well in connection, um, to a related financial policy. And so, um, in that time, we have continued to check for public comment. There has been no further public comment. I don't believe, and I'm looking at Mary Ellen just to make sure I'm not forgetting anything, that there were no other changes coming out of, based on my minutes, the last meeting we had. Just to remind folks, what this policy is about is authorizing the creation of a financial assistance program for the district to centralize the processes by which families can identify themselves as being in financial need. Um, and then that information being shared, obviously district-wide, but being maintained and collected centrally. So there aren't, uh, there are fewer opportunities to miss serving those families' wealth. So that's the purpose of the policy. Um, so I guess any questions before I make a motion or move it to vote? So, can I make the motion? I'd like to move that we vote to approve the financial assistance policy, program policy of the public schools of Brookline as stated.
Ms. Graham, any further discussion? All those in favor? Uh, it's unanimous. Congratulations, Dr. Jackson. A policy over here! Congratulations, Ms. Dunn.
You're gonna, you're gonna schedule all your votes for after ten PM.
That's right. We will just... We will just call this the Rocket Docket. Okay. Uh, any other liaisons or updates that anybody wishes to bring forth? Seeing none. We actually managed to make up a fair amount of time. We're only fifty minutes behind. Um, uh, we will, we have need for an executive session. Is this the only one we're going into? Okay. So this, we have need for an executive session for purpose three to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining, Brookline Educators Union, units A, B, and Para Professionals. Um, Ms. Quinn, can you pull the committee?
Yes.
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 Great. And we will, uh, not reconvene an open session at the end of the executive session. Uh, so thank you very much, everyone.